Okay, I'd like to call this special meeting of Cleveland Heights City Council to order. It is Thursday, December 19th at 7:00 PM. Addie, what do you call the roll?
Maddox.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Okay, all members are here, so we don't have anybody to excuse. Are there any amendments to the agenda? None will move on. We'll have to skip communications from the mayor because he's not here just as of yet. So do we have a report from the clerk of council?
I just want to say happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holidays, Addie.
And guess what? Next, we move on to public comment. I didn't think it would happen in the first, like, two minutes, but here we are.
We have all legislative comments tonight, by the way.
How many?
We have, I think, 17, but we have all legislation.
A bunch, alright. So when you come up, talk right into the microphone because, you know, people who are watching on YouTube can't hear you unless you're talking. So, you know, you can adjust the mic, right, Carla? And, you know, just say your name and the street you live on will be good enough. There's, you have a three-minute time limit. There's the timer right up there, and there's Addie over there. She'll, when you hear a series of beeps, you'll know it's, it's time's up. So Addie, call the first person, please.
Herb Wagers.
My name's Herb Wagers. I live over at Fairmount Boulevard. I'm a retired banker with an MBA in finance from Miami of Ohio. Spent 30-plus years in the banking industry, financial sector, many in senior management positions. There, I reviewed many financial statements. I created budgets and I approved budgets. As a concerned resident and taxpayer, I decided to educate myself on the topic of the 25 budget and looking at all the available data that was on the websites. It's, in my opinion, that the information Mayor Seren has provided is probably about 80% complete. It's not horrible. And just because council approved the last year's budget with more information than in the past 10 years was provided this year doesn't really mean that it's enough. Frankly, after reviewing the information that was provided, I wouldn't approve that budget, nor would I want to see council approve the budget either, as it's presented. This is a $100 million budget, people. I know you know that. It's not trivial. It deserves a very close, hard look. I'd like to start by asking Mayor Seren, good evening, Mayor. Please assure the city's employees and residents that their salaries and employment status are not at risk here, and the city will not stop providing services if there's a temporary budget put in place. Budget discussions of any kind should not be held under duress or misinformation. Council's raised a number of red flags that must be addressed. For me, the most compelling ones include the vacant positions in the finance department at the city, failure to comply with the state reporting requirements that were due last June for the 23 audited financial statements. Without an unqualified audit report, it's really hard to have faith in any of the financial numbers that are presented. Furthermore, the 2025 budget should not be compared to 24 budget, but to 24 actuals or best estimate. And 23 actuals. So with a little bit of effort and collaboration, I feel that council and mayor can work together and obtain the information necessary for a full-year budget approval. This would include answering all of council's questions in written form, getting the 23 audited results completed and published. This should be your number-one priority. Providing a restated budget, as I just described, and then providing a capital budget, which I didn't see anywhere. In the meantime, the proposed three-month temporary budget solution seems to be the only reasonable and appropriate action. The solution should be done in partnership with the city, providing council with the information needed to approve the budget. The time and effort that's been devoted to pointing fingers and assigning blame is not only counterproductive, but it's puzzling to me. The extremes of the narrative surrounding are making things worse. This is not a battlefield. Council and the city need to work together. The citizens, whose hard-earned money is being spent, and the city employees deserve better. Thank you for your time. Sorry I went over.
Carla Routenberg.
Good evening, Carla Routenberg, Berkshire Road. I'll be very brief. I have just three numbers that I'd like to share with you tonight. The number 84, the number 17, and the number 206. So the 84 is the number of pages that former Finance Director Eunetic's budget that was, that he presented to Mayor Seren or worked on with Mayor Seren in 2024 and was passed by this council, was 84 pages. The budget that Mayor Seren insists is a full-year's budget for 2025 and should be passed by council and amended later is 17 pages. 206 pages is the length of the City of Lakewood's budget for 2025. The City of Lakewood is an inner-ring suburb, like Cleveland Heights, one of the first suburbs consortium. It's about our size with a budget roughly like ours. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Gary Cantor.
Good evening, I'm Gary Cantor. I live on Cummings Road. I would like to thank the six members of city council who understand their duty to the city. You have been very brave and productive and bold and honorable. That's all I have to say.
Mike Riley.
I'll bring my laptop up. Getting to be an old hand here. Tony, members of city council, you are earning your pay this week. And really, it shouldn't be this hard, right? As I mentioned last week when I addressed council, two-plus years ago, maybe three years ago, I met with Tony Kuta to offer my assistance in solving the vacant housing problem. Tony told me then that the mayor was not allowing departments to talk with him without permission. The result of this is that we have no plan for vacant homes. To the best of my knowledge, we also have no strategic plan for the city. The mayor wants a budget, council wants a budget, but they can't get their questions answered to finalize a budget. It really is that simple. And the proverbial cherry on this Sunday, the mayor has threatened an investigation in the council meetings and threatened a lawsuit. As a result of this amateurish managerial style, we have seen a revolving door of qualified people, and key positions remain unfilled. Why are people quitting? Why are these key positions remain unfilled? And why is this council being denied the information they need on a regular basis? I believe the answer is simple. I believe the mayor seems more interested in his political persona than fixing these problems. The solution is really simple. Mr. Mayor, when council asks for information, you give it to them. When you hire a qualified person, you let them do their job. There's an old saying that past events are the best predictors of future behavior. These events and actions are not new, and were first seen in the mayor's early months. So no surprise that we are where we are now with this budget fiasco. So council, please wake up and smell the coffee, see what is in front of you, and don't be sidetracked with cliches like "let's all work together," blah, blah, blah. If you do, you're once again enabling behavior that has to be confronted and forced to change. My advice to the mayor is simple. If you have a problem with being transparent 24/7 with key people or council, and be a team player for the city's good, then please resign before you get recalled. Thank you.
Mark Lefkowitz.
I don't know.
Mr. President, would you please ask Mr. Cantor to refrain from speaking during this council meeting? He hasn't been called.
Is Mr. Lefkowitz here? Mr. Lefkowitz? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, would you please ask the audience to refrain from speaking during this council meeting unless they're called upon?
I think everybody's sufficiently settled down.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mark Lefkowitz. I'm a resident of Cleveland Heights. I'm also an employee here in Cleveland Heights. I want to share a story of my time before City Hall. I was an advocate who wanted to change the system. I signed on to volunteer for the Cleveland Heights Transportation Advisory Committee, and my passion got me elevated to co-chair with Howard Mayor. We had the good fortune of being joined by former Planning Director Richard Wong and then-councilmember Mary Dunbar advising city council on matters of transportation. As an advocate, I was really good at telling the city how to improve without knowing much about how cities were run. In a way, I was the perfect advocate. My views were informed and unbowed by the reality of what running a city and all its glorious complication and all the incredible accomplishments that happened here day in and day out would alter. I thought I could change things if I could be in charge. My view of City Hall has changed dramatically since working here. I see the impact and the momentum from 1,000 decisions being made on our behalf as residents and advocates. I see change taking shape that would impress even my skeptical past self. I can acknowledge how little I knew about who was keeping the lights on, who was picking up the garbage, who was planting the trees, who was signing the contracts, who was writing the press releases and signing the laws and fixing houses and cutting the ribbons, and yes, creating the budgets for all of us in Cleveland Heights. I remember biking back home one night from a TAC meeting with Richard Wong, who calmly let cars pass him by on the street, and I remember the words of Mary Dunbar, who said, "I'm interested in slowing down commuters for the residents. I work for the residents." In that spirit, I ask for you to humbly accept what you don't know about this budget and pass it because you trust the people here who will make every dollar and cent work for you, the good of us all. Council, you are a remarkable body with remarkable power, and I humbly ask you to pass this 12-month budget today and leave the uncertainty in the past. Thank you.
Patrick Costigan.
President Kuta, the rest of you, Mayor Seren, Law Director Hannah, council clerk, I stand here at a podium where I have heard over my time here at the city so many racist statements, sexist statements, classist statements directed at my staff and the residents whom we serve. And I want to say, every single day, we come into this building, we come to the community center, we come into every city facility, we serve all of you. We don't have to like you, and I'll make my personal opinions very clear. I have a lot of issues with the way you are treating city staff, historically with the way you have treated city staff. Mr. Petrus, you're a renter. You ran on being a renter. A three-month budget? A three-month budget? What is that going to do for the renters who work in this organization? Ms. Russell. I was born and raised in Akron, Ohio. My mom worked for B.F. Goodrich. She worked for the United Rubber Workers. Your insistence on asking for detailed information so close to a budget conversation is disrespectful to the people who work here. And I will tell you another thing. I have been around labor Democrats my entire career. I have never seen them work as little as you have to actually advance the support of worker rights. These are the workers of the city. They do the work. I'm asking you, you don't have to like me. I know you don't like me. I know that you repeatedly ask people to do public records requests about my resume. I know where that comes from. I know that many of those people are in this room. You don't have to like me. What I ask is that you respect the people I work with, the people who I have had to explain to multiple times today that their job is not in limbo, that they don't need to be looking for other opportunities. That is what you're doing. That is what you're doing to queer employees, to trans employees like myself. You are threatening my health care in three months, a transgender employee of the City of Cleveland Heights. I don't have to talk about that because it's my personal things, but now, Ms. Russell, you've asked for my dead name. It's now public records information. For what? So I want you to look at all of these people in this room, and I want you to think very clearly about the responsibility you have. And I want you to know, you do not have to like me, but I need you to respect the work that is being done, and I need you to respect the fact that these people have showed up and they will continue to show up. Whether or not they are paid, in four months, they will be here for the residents. Thank you.
Zach Rabinelli.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Zach Rabinelli. I work in housing preservation here at the City of Cleveland Heights. I just wanted to keep this pretty short. So with so much uncertainty right now coming from the federal government with the massive change that we've seen in the last election, your job's just got that much more important. We are looking towards our local leadership for that guidance, for that stability. As council members, you are not just a part of government, you are the government that we see, feel, and interact with every single day. Your decisions, accessibility, and your dedication to our community are what will guide us through these uncertain times. Now is the moment to strengthen our local governance, to show that even in a national landscape of changes, that our community can thrive under wise, proactive, and compassionate local leadership. Just the work that we've done here in the past couple of years with LED Safe initiatives, with some of the housing grants that we've done here, we've more than doubled the amount of people that we've been able to help. We want to continue to do that work. Things are getting more expensive, people's homes are falling apart, and we're looking towards you for that stability. Thank you.
Kristy Lee.
My name is Kristy Lee, and I'm an employee here with the City of Cleveland Heights in the Planning Department. Right now, we're all in a moment of uncertainty, and uncertainty is defined as a state of not knowing what will happen or the feeling of not knowing the truth about something or someone. And it can result with a limited knowledge of any event. Right now, as an employee, I come to you, and I want to tell you about three little people. Their names are Autumn, Christopher, and Lex. Those are my children. They are 14, 10, and 7. In the past eight years, I have dedicated my life to this place. When I started here, I had just had my baby. I came in here 12 weeks after giving birth. And since then, I have dedicated my life to a city that I don't even live in. But every day, I come here and I face adversity, I face challenges, I've heard racist comments, I've heard people make comments not only about you, but the staff that I work with. And every day, we come here and we smile, and we do the backend of the work that I think that a lot of you don't understand, how much time we put in and how much we invest. I have missed award ceremonies because I'm here. If any of you all noticed, I was here last night. When you all went home, I was still here. I didn't leave this building until 10 o'clock. Mind you, I had been here since 8 o'clock. And I do that time and time again. And I'm one of the employees that I don't need a pat on the back, I don't need an award, I don't really even want you to know my name. I like to remain anonymous. But in duty calls, I stand up for what is right, and I'm there. And right now, I feel uncertain with my three children, that is mommy's income going to still be a stability in our household? Considering looking at the world today and what possibly could happen in January and how all of our lives could be altered, I'm looking at it as the place that I have dedicated my life to, do you actually care that I might not have an income? Do you care that when I hear you all talk and discuss and go back and forth and argue with each other, that we don't hear you? We hear you and we see you. And it's unfair to us because we dedicate ourselves to this building, we dedicate ourselves to this economy, we dedicate ourselves to this government. And all we are asking is for you all to please put your differences aside, put your differences aside against this man and make a decision. Thank you.
Drew Herzig.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Mr. Mayor, councilors, I'm here to support the mayor and the city staff. I know that very little I say will make any difference to you because hate has filled your hearts and closed your minds, and I don't understand it. I don't understand where the hate comes from. Is it racism, sexism? I just don't get it. The incredible courage of city staff here coming to speak to you, outing themselves, taking the chances of being punished by you, and I know you were capable of it because you've already punished me for speaking to you, but I have to be a witness to the mayor and the city staff. You have striven, you've been obstructing to them since the mayor came in. This is not the first time out. The person who cited, you know, Tony Kuta's lie about the mayor refusing to let city staff speak to city councilors kind of thing, that stuff has been, you've been putting that out into the community since the mayor took office. I don't get it. Why do you hate him so much? People are here begging you, begging you to do the right thing and adopt a 12-month budget so that they don't have to worry about in three months, are they going to be out on the streets where their children have to pull out of school, where is their health coverage? And yet, your hate has driven you to this point. I don't understand the hate. I've watched some of you. You don't see your faces have turned to stone, as your hearts of heart and your faces have turned to stone, and it's tragic. I thought some of you were decent people, but aside from Councilor Maddox, I don't know what has happened to you. Where is the hate coming from? I don't get it. And by the way, the mayor is an elected official. He does not take orders from the city council. So if you don't like the mayor, then run for the mayor yourself. Maybe that's some of your plans. I don't get it, but... And it's like, some of you I know are so damaged you can't stop hating. I get that. But for the others of you, are you, do you know what you're doing to this community? Do you know how you are harming people, not just myself, but look at these city employees who are here tonight giving up their time with their families, their dinnertime, that sort of thing, to say, "Please, don't harm us anymore"? I don't, I really don't understand it, and I wish, I wish I could get through to you. But again, hate has apparently closed your hearts and minds, and I can only pray for this city because God help us if you continue to do this kind of damage to our community.
Amy Eugene.
Goodness gracious, this is pretty awesome. This is the most city employees I've seen, and I'm touched. I'm here to talk about the budget. I've been responsible for a 1.5 million budget. I've worked with finance departments, finance committees, councils, accounting firms, stakeholders, directors, and staff to close budgets and to project the following year's budget. At the federal government level right now, we're watching another showdown between political parties to pass temporary spending measures to avoid a government shutdown. That is an example of what is not happening here in Cleveland Heights. We are fortunate that for us, what is happening is about basic accounting principles and nothing more. The city is doing a temporary budget because the accounting books for 2024 have not yet been finished, and the city has an incomplete set of budget data. To that point, yesterday's council of the whole meeting, the interim finance director stated that he was able to close October and November, which is fabulous, and he'll need about a week to validate that data and report on it. And then, of course, there's still December to reconcile year-end spending. We can only be where we are, and that is without a complete picture of 2024's financials. One aspect of observing the council meetings for me has been hearing council members talk about the various departmental budget reports and capital requests. It's through those reports that the council has been hearing the voices of the staff. It was through the conversations and presentations with department directors that council hears the voices of staff. I appreciate every time I hear council bring up those reports or mention something specific in a list of capital requests. It tells me that they've listened and that they continue to listen to staff. That's the budget process. Cleveland Heights is sound financially and has reserves. Therefore, with a temporary budget, there is no financial reason for a disruption in services or payroll. Again, there is no financial reason for a disruption in services or payroll with a temporary budget. I'll end there. We're in really good hands. We're in really good hands, and a temporary budget is a fiscally sound approach to take. Thank you, everybody.
Melody Joy Hart.
Melody Joy Hart, Monmouth Road. I do not feel having a three-month budget is sound, since the staff would not be able to issue a PO for purchases that would be paid for later in the year. There is no, and there's a long line for that, for the order. There's no valid reason to pass a three-month budget rather than a one-year budget, and passing a temporary budget created by council members that are not financially qualified to reduce the budget themselves is not responsible. I'm an MBA. I'm a certified public accountant, certified treasury professional, and I'm certified in public, in financial planning and analysis. I serve on a number of boards as treasurer, as board finance chair, and I have a 35-year career as an executive in finance. So budgeting is not new to me. As president of council, I led the 2024 budget process successfully in collaboration with the mayor. If questions have not been answered, why has council not requested a new meeting with staff? Staff was here last night, and council specifically said they did not want to hear from staff, so they left the room. At that point, the council could have asked them not to leave yet so that they could ask questions then. The mayor offered to sit down with you and granted you access to staff. The finance person was there and indicated that your basis of making a temporary budget terrified him. As a CPA and a financial planning person, it terrifies me as well. It was not a sound way to do it. Scare tactics by non-financial people claiming we would have a $10 million deficit rather than $1 million is not true and are unproductive. In the past, Councilor Larson has often said, "Since we had such a high reserve, that we should be spending some of it to add staff or improve services," which is what is going to happen, particularly in housing. And much of council agreed then, including me, although setting a minimal except for reserve would be a best practice. Now setting a $1 million deficit to add staff is getting blown out of proportion. There was plenty of time wasted last night on a temporary budget by non-financial people. The most responsible thing to do is either, one, to speak with the mayor this week, set up whatever meetings are necessary with staff and the mayor to go through the budget, as he suggested, and understand it so you can pass it. Or, two, pass a temporary one-year budget. Using the mayor's budget, you could draft legislation that says you are going to pass it effective for this period of time, and you want it to be revisited. I'm sure the law director could tell you how to do that. The mayor had stated, too, that Andy Eunetic, our old director, had helped as contrast to develop the budget. You trusted Mr. Eunetic last year. Ask the mayor to set up, call with him if you want. It is a wrong assumption by council people who are unknowledgeable about audit or finances that having a CPA come in and do all this work is not going to affect the staff. You obviously haven't been through an audit. Hiring a CPA... Hiring a C P A consultant will affect the staff considerably. The first thing is the consultant has to be brought up to speed by the staff. Then they're going to have to do work for his evaluation. And he stated he'd never even done a budget. No previous council had to be spoon-fed. They did their homework. Council does not need to waste the tax dollars if it doesn't homework us. Schedule the needing, meetings you need, or finalize the budget, or pass the mayor's full budget, but get it done. It's your job.
Angel Fasolo?
Angel Fasolo, I live on Anchill. The problem's Mayor Sarin. I don't have any reason to think, I mean, the problem is Mayor Sarin. I don't want the problem to be Mayor Sarin. I don't want to have to vote for some other person who might end up running against you. But this is a game. Everybody who's here tonight is going to keep getting paid. If you guys have been paying attention to meetings over the year, I believe all seven, I could be wrong, but I believe all seven of these council people vote every single time when a department needs something. They, they, every single time. I think that's one thing we could all be in agreement on. I think Councilman Cobb mentioned that this week, too. And I could be mistaken. It's a game for you. I actually believe everyone in this room and all seven, I actually believe, even though I don't agree with all seven councilmen. And everyone in this room doesn't agree, but I think everyone wants this city to succeed. I don't believe you care if this city succeeds, Mayor Sarin. I believe you, I believe you care about yourself, about your career. It's a game. It's sick and it's twisted. The amount of time you have spent playing games, posting, sending emails out, inaccuracies, contradicting yourself and then calling it the truth, not changing an opinion, but contradicting your own truths. Well, which things you say are true? I do hope you step down. I don't think that does anyone any good. But you are not trustworthy. We had a conversation outside last night. And I showed up at 4:30 when you invited the entire city to show up at 4:30. You didn't have the decency to show up to your own party, your own 4:30 meet and greet before the meeting last night, which was ludicrous. You could have been doing work, doing city work and getting things done instead of playing games. And I will tell the community, I will tell everyone, no, I do not trust you. You are not trustworthy, even if you tell me you're the most trustworthy person of council. You were, you are not a member of council. You were, you are not. And I don't think you're going to be mayor much longer.
Gary Benjamin?
Good evening, council and mayor. Gary Benjamin, Monmouth Road. I just think you guys should understand why people feel insecure. They've watched you in action, especially the majority here. You think these people think that you are going to come up with a budget in three months? With a C P A who's never done a budget before? I wouldn't want to rely on that. I certainly don't rely on five of you right now. This is a very strange budget fight. Usually, budget fights are, there's something in the budget we don't want. Mayor, take it out. Mayor says, I won't take it out, and you get in a fight. There's something in the budget you do want. You say, put it in. Mayor says, don't want it in. Then there's a fight. This is weird. You're looking at bank statements now. You know what the numbers are. You know what the income is going to be. You have no reason to do a three-month budget except pure political gain. That's where you are.
Greg Kluge?
Good evening, council, mayor, Director Hannah, Greg Kluge, Stillman Road, Cleveland Heights. I'm actually going to be reading a statement on behalf of Guy Thellian, who wanted to be here tonight, but he's sick with COVID, so I will be here in his place. I speak in place of Guy Thellian, who served on the Charter Review Commission with me and who was involved in exploring budget practices in the city for the purpose of bringing budget-related recommendations to the commission for consideration. Guy tested positive for COVID last night, so was unable to attend the meeting. Here's the statement he wanted me to read for you. According to my several discussions with those involved, the budget process undertaken in 2023 for the purpose of producing the city's 2024 budget was praised by everyone involved, including members of council and the executive branch of city government. In that process, the mayor and staff prepared a budget book, which was shared with council and became basis for the budget passed for 2024. The 2024 city budget has served the city well from what we've seen during 2024. The 2023 budget process and information sharing for the 2024 budget served as the basis for the Charter Review Commission's recommendations to council and can be referenced in the recommendations of the commission to council found on the city's website. There is now controversy concerning information available to council to properly fulfill its responsibilities regarding the budget. I ask that the controversy end and an effective budget process be completed, starting with a publication on the city's website of, one, the 2024 budget book as the model for 2025, and, two, current and future materials provided to council by the mayor supporting his 2025 budget. In this way, the following important actions can be accomplished. Number one, all involved, the mayor's office, council, and importantly, the residents of Cleveland Heights will know what is proposed for the coming year budget and how it is supported. Number two, residents of Cleveland Heights will be enabled to make their own assessment of how well the mayor and his office and council members are doing their jobs related to the city's 2025 budget. And finally, we can avoid further controversy about what information is available and give attention to accomplishing the purpose of the budget process and preparing the city's budget. Thank you.
Barbara Sisniewski?
Barbara Sisniewski, North Hampton Road. I first want to applaud every city worker who has come here today. I have engaged with many of you in a personal engagement, be it refuge, park and recreation, housing. And never would I seek to disrespect your investment in our city and all that entails. This budget, budget engagement does not put you at jeopardy. The decision to be able to do a budget is not hate or racism, nor is my presence here. There was a six-to-one vote in council on Monday to vote for a safer four-month budget due to missing information to engage a full-year budget. The posture that the mayor gave was that all the city would be at risk in paying city workers if a quarter budget would be implemented, awaiting the full answers that they still needed to do. And so there was a bit of untruth, or at least questionable, truth or untruths there. So this created a division of the city, the mayor versus city council minus one. And several citizens have spoken their concern, and yet some have been corrected or thwarted, sometimes by disvisement. So listening from leadership didn't seem to happen. And I see council members minus one as concerned for the momentum through information. And I see instead of cooperation from the office of the mayor, an attempt to engage an us-against-them mentality, rather than seek to engage a majority who work on behalf of citizens to do the efforts of what every citizen deserves, a viable and working budget. Instead, some tantrums happen and letters are dispersed to divide and delude the truth of what all the citizenry want, and that is a healthy cooperative vessel for engaging city operations. I tend to consider myself an informed and cognizant and hopeful citizen who has spoken my desires before and been involved in some of these forgotten areas of my city. I give support to city councils as they work forward to a government that listens and communicates rather than divides and ignores. Thank you.
Lou Radovoyevich?
My name's Lou Radovoyevich. I live on Middlehurst Road, been here all my life. I guess before I really began, you know, when I started hearing words like being racist, bigots and everything else, just so you're clear, I've been here all my life, and I know everybody on this board. You, you don't choose to live in Cleveland Heights to be a bigot, to be racist. That's not what Cleveland Heights folks are all about. So just be careful when you use those words. They're painful words.
Lou, can you move the microphone up?
Yep. So just to start off with, I really want to thank the six of you on council for making this decision. That was a critical choice, and I'm proud of you for doing it, and I appreciate you doing it. You know, you did the right thing. And I found it interesting because this morning I had a chance to chat with a few workers over at Lindhurst. And I was just asking, as, as a neighbor, we're doing some food drive, and I was like, so what do you folks do? And Lindhurst, for all the employees, if you're questioning here in town, Lindhurst every year does this type of temporary budget. It's a part of the process. It's no big deal. Every year, they do a three-month temporary budget, and then they get things to work. They don't do all of this at this time of year. So the question is, you know, did we just make a mountain out of a molehill? So, so all we're asking are for numbers. I want to thank my two neighbors, the neighbor from Fairmount and certainly Amy, that I've heard for the first time. I never met either of them, but I have full trust in those two types of neighbors that understand budgets. They're just looking at raw data. They're just looking for things that are black and white. They're looking from left to right. That's all they're looking for. And then we're putting together the budget. The budget ultimately needs to be driven by the administration. But to me, it's no big deal. And there shouldn't be any concern about anybody's employment. I think it's been crystal clear that there's plenty of money to take care of everybody's job here. And that's, it's unfortunate that that was brought up. I think Councilman Maddox, yesterday, you, you took the time to, to, to share concern about the folks in finance, that they'd be overworked with having this, this third-party accounting firm ask these questions. And I, I think, you know, overworked, I think overworked means that they're valued. And I think the better question is, do they feel valued? You know, they have not had anybody supervise them, give them a sense of like what to do, how to get it done. And right now, they're in the spotlight, in the spotlight right now of our city. So to me, I think we really need to look at how we can make them feel valued as employees. But, you know, to me, at the end of the day, I just say, hey, you know, I, I don't know. I just feel like this is, I appreciate everything we're doing. Let's just take the time and do it right. This is a very important matter. We're talking about, finance is a very big company. This is not a startup business. We've been doing this for 100 years. We should be able to put in the new numbers, take the time, get all the details, and then reevaluate everything. So we're, we're in good shape.
Stephen Walker?
Greetings, everyone. Greetings, everyone. So I am speaking as an employee going on 29 years. So Cleveland Heights has been, I'm going to be honest, I've given Cleveland Heights kind of more than I've given my own family because, because that's how much I value this community. So I've had people reach out to me on Facebook, employees, residents, et cetera. And at this point in time, we're, uncertainty is the word for me. And again, as the gentleman said, some of us do feel scared. Some of us don't feel confident that we may have a job. And if you have families and you're really trying to live comfortably, it, it bothers me. I'm saddened. I'm just hoping that, I say all that to say, I just hope we can figure something out and get to some point of agreement in some type of manner. Because I think everybody on the council, including the mayor and everybody else that's involved, wants to see something to keep our community stable. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Karen Lash?
Karen Lash, Monticello Boulevard. Not that tall. First of all, to all the employees, I want to thank you for your service and tell you that I appreciate all that you do. But I also implore you, implore you to give this council credit. They're not going to do anything to make your jobs go away or have you hanging out there. There's enough money, and they've made comments about making sure that there's enough money so you guys are covered. This, the six of you, I want to thank for all your hard work, your dedication, your commitment, all the extra hours, all the work that you've done all year and with this budget, which has just been a nightmare. And it's for people who don't understand, they don't have the numbers to do an accurate budget. And because they're conscientious and because they care, they're trying to do it right. So the federal government right now is doing a temporary budget, although they always say, you know, the, the country will shut down. That's not the case for Cleveland Heights. So I hope you employees can start to believe that you're going to be okay. This council doesn't hate you like some person talked about. I don't know where that came from, but they have worked really hard. I, look at this room. Look at all these citizens. I can't tell you how many hours we have spent at meetings. We're not getting paid for it. It's on our own time, our nights away from family, dogs, friends, whatever. And we're doing this because we're concerned, and we've been following what they do. So thank you all, and I hope that you guys will trust them to do the right thing.
That's all I have, unless there's anyone else. Okay.
All right. As always, thank you so much. Always great to hear from the public. And to the employees, we've always been with you. We are with you now, and we will be with you in the future, and you can count on it. And with that, we're going to move to legislation.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Yes. I'd like to make a request. I know that it was on the agenda, and my apologies, I got held up. And so we skipped over my comments at the beginning of the meeting. I would like to make a request to make some comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think nine years ago, I made and continued to make a critical mistake. When I joined city council in 2015, I tend to adhere to a respectability politics and a calm nature, possibly to the point of dishonesty. And my apologies for that because obviously it's led to this. I'll put it this way. I don't think that these council members that voted against a year-long budget hate the employees of the city of Cleveland Heights. But I think it's clear that you don't give a damn about them. Now, we're not talking about the specter of a complete government shutdown at the end of March, but what we're talking about is the absolute lack of faith and confidence in you to produce something that makes sense for this city within those three months. Why should we believe you? I'll put it this, another, another thing to say, you know, I shouldn't even be surprised by the misstatements. Liars lie. That's, that's what they do. And, and I shouldn't be surprised by the echo chamber either because parroting those lies is what sycophants do. Now, there's evidence to show that when Ms. Rautenberg quotes some numbers, 17, right? She misses the fact that in the course of the budget hearings, the information that was provided to council took it up to 60 whole pages of a budget presentation. Now, the actual budget, and this is something that I'd like to educate both the council and the public on, the actual budget is the budget ordinance. The budget ordinance goes into specific detail about the expenditures of the city. The budget book is something of my creation at the beginning of this term to provide additional information, and the budget hearings were an insistence of mine to provide additional communication and connection between the council and the directors of the departments to provide more information about the activities of those departments. Now, we're not stopping there. So 60 pages of information, financial information, that was provided to the council in the form of an initial budget book and additional presentations about each department, was then supplemented by, let's see. then supplemented by, let's see, seven pages of an expense budget worksheet report, 45 pages of another expense budget worksheet report, two additional pages that council requested that should have been in the original budget book, I can own that. For some reason, it was neglected to be placed in the budget book and when council asked for it, I provided it, showing the projected unencumbered fund balance at the beginning of next year and the estimated ending balance at the end of next year. Information provided to council. On top of that, the 11 pages of individual employee names and salaries, completely unnecessary and invasive requests on the part of this council, 52 pages of their names and health coverage benefits, another completely unnecessary and invasive request from this council, which has done nothing to inform their thoughts on this budget. 27 more pages showing expenses and other than personal services, 67 more pages showing detail in expenses in personal services, salaries, benefits. This council has not received no information. And when they tell you that they have not received this financial information, they are lying to you. We're not going to mince words anymore. We're not going to say that they were mistaken. We're going to express this in an honest way. This is the mistake that I made over the last almost 10 years working in this government for this city, is not calling this out when I see it. Lying is what liars do. Now, all of you are here with, I think, a really poor understanding of how fund budgeting works. We've got council members who apparently have the same level of misunderstanding. I'd love to be able to rectify that situation, but as it has been shown over the course of several of these meetings, the council is more interested in talking about pretend deficiencies in the information and how they can't possibly in good conscience pass a budget that will fund the employees that they say they support, the salaries, the benefits of these employees. Now, I would love to believe and feel optimistic that this council can get it together and figure out a way to understand the budget information well enough to feel comfortable voting on it. Now, I will say, as Melody Hart mentioned, when we had a CPA in charge of this council, we passed budgets. Somehow they understood them. This talk about this $900,000 deficit this year, completely disingenuous in the face of the much larger deficit, if you want to call it a deficit, that we budgeted for last year and they unanimously passed for this year. Everybody says, and Mr. Kluge mentioned, 2024 budget seemed to serve this city well. I believe that's the case. We've had our challenges this year. And that's one of the reasons why, and I can admit, getting information to this council took longer, it took more work because of the difficulties that we faced in staffing. And I personally, and with the assistance of Mr. Phelps and others, have put together every single bit of information that the council received last year and much more. It is an absolute truth that they have been provided every bit of information that they would need to pass an annual budget, especially considering the fact that at any point over the course of the next year, if problems arise, the council can always find ways to amend the budget because that is within their purview. Now, I don't think it matters to these people. I think ultimately, this is power politics, this is posturing. And they've got six votes. And we've seen what happens when they've got a veto-proof majority, they couldn't care less about a check or a balance. And so they behave in incredibly stupid, short-sighted ways. And that's what's happening today. They put together a three-month budget, what, last night, planning on passing it today? With no understanding of how to prioritize a capital project that might be less important than one in June, but it happens in February, we can pay for it in February, so we're gonna prioritize that February capital project with no expectation or confidence that we'll get to fund the more important project that we can't start until June. But that might inhibit our ability to fund that project in June. I've explained these things to council. I've explained that the concern that I have is more than just this, sky is falling, you know, at the end of March, the government's gonna shut down, everybody's gonna be out of a job, I've never said that. But what I have said is that people in this organization have options. They can go elsewhere, they can take their talents elsewhere. Frankly, so can I. I know some of you would welcome that. I'll be fine, I can land on my feet, I have opportunities elsewhere as well. I care about this city, I want it to do the best thing when given the option. The best thing is to respect the people who perform these services enough to say, you know what, Mayor, that compromise solution that you had where we separate out capital, we focus on the operating budget so that we can make sure that these people feel secure, that we have made a promise to them at the beginning of the year, as we have every single year, that they can feel secure that in April, this council, who is a bit unpredictable sometimes, we don't always know what they're gonna do. When you request individualized salary information, you don't know how people are gonna use it, you can't know. And given the track record of this council, I don't think anybody on staff can feel confident to a degree of certainty that they'll get it together by March. Because hey, maybe there's some other political situation that they can take advantage of to make me look bad. That's fine, I can take that. I've had people saying terrible things about me since 2015 in this city. I can withstand that, I've got thick skin. But what I do not appreciate and what I will not respect is putting these employees in the crosshairs. And more than that, it's not even about the employees who might leave, because there will be some that might leave. This might be just the push they need to look to see if there are opportunities out there, and when you look, you find them. What happens to the ones that stay? Good employees leave, when their teammates leave, makes their jobs harder. Think about the managers here, the directors, who might want to be recruiting people over the course of the next three months, how are you recruiting somebody when there's no budget for the year? This is no way to run a government. And frankly, the risks of a 12-month budget are completely fabricated and overblown. The council is in charge of the budget. In fact, it's the council's charter responsibility, frankly, to prepare the budget appropriation. I provide my estimates of revenues and expenditures. Council's the budgetary authority. I had a meeting with council leadership today. And again, last-ditch effort, I offered again this compromise idea, let's pass a 12-month operating budget. That means that we are passing personal services so that employees can get paid, so that they can feel certain about scheduling that dental appointment six months from now. That means that we're funding other than personal services, which means that we can, I don't know, sign contracts for a Kane Park show that won't happen until the summer. Plan out a season, which happens earlier in the year, but the expenditure doesn't happen until later. A temporary three-month budget does not allow us to certify those funds. A temporary three-month budget can provide just the push people need to say, you know what, maybe Cleveland Heights isn't the place for me to work. Whether that's somebody who we're trying to recruit, whether that's somebody who's here, who might need just that extra little push to look elsewhere. I've mentioned this to these council members and we've been dismissed over and over again. Now, I've been asked questions about this budget that no council has ever asked before. And before you think that this is some degree of intelligence scrutiny that's happening, I'm talking about questions like, what do the historical fiscal policies of the city teach you about how we might, you know, have a reserve policy or a long-term capital policy? Now, tell me, what does that inform you? If I answer that open-ended question, how does that inform you about the costs and the revenues in 2025? I have heard absolutely nothing from this council in opposition to funding the extra firefighters that we've requested, because run volumes have increased exponentially over the past 30 years and staffing has decreased. I've heard no complaints about this, this is additional money that we'd be spending. To me, it's worth it. To me, it's worth it to have firefighters that are not overburdened, that are appropriately staffed. We've got police and fire contracts that go back to April 1st. Now, in April 1st of next year, under these contracts, you've got some potential increases happening we have to plan for. Now, I care about that, I care about the stability that a 12-month operating budget provides to those officers, to those firefighters. I've brought this up to council and it's been dismissed. I don't know why, other than the fact that we're looking at 2025, I don't know why it's been made such a big deal, that there's a general fund reserve that we're tapping into for a relatively minimal amount of money. This incredible concern about the Archer study, when any changes that would impact the budget would go through this council and council would make the determination about whether or not we increase the budget if necessary, or don't, or stage it in a way that is more digestible? I think the track record of this council through this budget process has shown that council is not willing to engage with these directors in any meaningful way when it comes to an exploration of the needs of their departments. Because when we bring directors to their meetings on a repeated basis over the course of the last few weeks, we've asked on multiple occasions, would you like to hear the input from directors on this? The answer has been a resounding no. So no, I cannot believe that this council views these people as actual people. I've been told that I'm playing a game and I care about my political career. What people don't realize is that I never wanted to be a politician. And I don't anticipate being a politician for the rest of my career either. But what I do absolutely believe is that the people who work for this city, me included, frankly, we bust our asses, we do hard work. When problems arise, we face them head-on. We step in when things are falling down. And I can barely imagine that this council would be willing to do the work under all of these difficult circumstances that we're facing, to actually have a real conversation with me, with the directors, with the staff, about what the budget should look like for next year. We're willing to sit down with you, we're willing to work it out. It's pretty late in the month, but I know that I would be absolutely willing to take time. I know some of you, your vacation might be more important. It's not to me. This city is more important. So I'm willing to take the time to do the best thing. If you've got a problem with some specific line item in the budget you have not brought it up. Additionally, and this is where I think the concerns about bigotry and racism come in. I'm not done. Please.
I'm not cutting you off, I would like you to start to wrap it up.
I'll do my best.
Pretty big, we have a pretty full agenda.
This is where the questions about bigotry and racism come up. Last year, when a white man was presenting the budget, Mr. Unatic, everybody took everything he said at face value. This year, Mr. Unatic was in the background, doing work in the background, still participating in the process, but the face presenting it was slightly different. I mean, we can talk about people's impressions of me and my experience working on budgets much larger than this at the county level, passing multiple budgets here and understanding them. Now, I was able to understand the budgets that were presented to me with a whole hell of a lot less detail than you were provided and a whole hell of a lot less explanation than you've been provided. That's a function of my training and my experience. But it is very difficult not to notice that when that experience is available to you to help you understand that yes, personal services are not just found specific to a department, they're also found in the hospitalization fund, over $8 million. That was such a huge discrepancy to you. It was so difficult to understand this discrepancy between the presentations about departments and the actual figures in the budget. And when it was explained to you, this is where the disingenuity comes in, when it was explained to you, it changed your worldview not one bit. New information, when presented, should help you adjust. But clearly, this council cannot because it's set on a particular path and I think it's firmly understood by people who see you clearly, that the reason for that is that your stated reasons for this are not the true reasons for this, because you're liars. With that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eddie, we're gonna move on with legislation first readings.
We did have an additional late comment, would you like to?
Oh, please, by all means.
Len Friedson?
Three minutes, right there.
I came here tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, Len Friedson, 3065 Berkshire Road. I came here tonight really to be, to talk to the employees who feel that they are at risk. And I want you to know that I have sympathy for your concerns. I don't believe that they are warranted, but you believe that they are warranted. And I could only say to you that we need to be rational in looking at that concern and that I am confident that your concerns are heard and that you won't have need for concern. I'm just telling you that, I can't provide factual proof of that, I'm just saying to you, I believe that that's the case. I'm supportive of the employees. We shouldn't be here, there is no reason for this. A budget is the primary responsibility, one of the primary responsibilities of the mayor of the city of Cleveland Heights and it is the council's job to approve it. This is in the charter, it's the responsibility of the mayor. So we can get out of this with cooperation and we will get out of it. But I don't think that the hundred-odd subjects that the mayor just went through needs to go without comment and I want to make that comment. I don't disagree with 100% of the things that you said. I think that there is some merit to some of the things that you said, Mr. Mayor. I will also say that in 2021, I voted for you. By early 2022... By early 2022, I started to become shocked at what I saw the mayor of this city do. It was in 2022, continued in 2023, and continues in 2024. I am shocked. There is room to get out of this, and I think that there is some appetite for everybody to give on this. But the truth is, you don't have credibility with me. You do, I do not believe you. I just don't. And it's been earned. It's not a one-time issue. It's a consistent measure of behavior and words that I don't believe anymore. I don't believe you. I want to believe you, but I can't. So, I would ask that if there is any room for you or this council to say, let's get a real budget done, which I don't think there's time for, but if there is, let's do it. And if not, let's do the temporary and move on with your cooperation. And it's going to require your cooperation. Thank you.
All right, again, thank you all for speaking. So, Eddie, first readings for consideration for adoption?
Yes, I have resolution number 268-2024 on first reading. Resolution authorizing a change order to the agreement with Fabrizi Trucking and Pavement as contractor for the CH9, CH32, CH57, and CH58 SSO control projects and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 269-2024 on first reading. Resolution authorizing a change order to the agreement with Jadco Construction Services, Inc. as contractor for the Surrey Lennox Garage Repair Project and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm passing this one down to you guys now. I have ordinance number 270-2024 on first reading and ordinance to amend certain subpar paragraphs of ordinance number 198-2023 and subsequent amending ordinances relating to appropriations and other expenditures of the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024 and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Just getting this right now.
Well, second, but I'd like discussion, please, since we're just receiving this.
Yeah, sure, I was just gonna just do that. Have a second, and there is discussion.
That was a second?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, Councilwoman Larson, did you want to start the discussion?
Can we just have a moment to look at this information, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Who's mic? Oh, okay, yeah, it is on.
Mr. President, can I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
Is there any other documentation with, like a staff memo or anything like that?
Yeah, unfortunately, it didn't print with this, but I will send it to you guys right now. These are the transfers out for the end of the year.
Our acting finance director is here if somebody wants to. I don't want to volunteer you, but if somebody had a question for the finance.
Would it be all right if he came up and explained to the general public what this?
I'd be fine with that.
That'd be helpful.
Mr. Feltz? Yeah, if he would come up and maybe first explain this and then?
Not question if they knew what we're looking at, so I figured it might be helpful. Some context for them, thank you.
I don't know, Mr. President, it's been expressed in this meeting that I don't allow directors to talk to council, so I'm not sure if we're...
I get it, I get it, go ahead.
What's the question?
Yeah, do you want to explain the transfers?
Okay, the transfers?
Yes.
We had a transfer Excel file that was dated 9/30/2024. Unfortunately, that's three months ago, and we had projections for revenues and we had projections for expenses. And we rolled that unencumbered funds that are rolled forward to the end of 2024. That resulted in a $54 million surplus, $19 million in the general fund. And what I was explaining to a couple of people, including Legal and yourself, before the meeting, when you have projections, the actuals could come in and you could be under, still at a deficit or a surplus that you didn't know about because we, those projections probably won't be spot-on. So, you run the risk of missing a number here or there. But I think Legal has worked out a solution for that problem. Is that clear to everybody?
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the public were looking at it. That explanation is perfect. I don't know if they have any questions, but thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
So, we are receiving this just now. We're being asked to transfer millions of dollars across city funds. We just received it right now. We repeatedly asked for numbers about Kane Park, for example. The mayor was unwilling to provide those to us. Finally, earlier this week, he provided revenues. We don't have expenses. I followed up with his email asking that we receive the expenses. Haven't received them. It looks like we're looking to...
And I did too, by the way.
I'm sorry?
I did too. I followed up on that email.
It looks like we're being asked to transfer money for a $240,000 negative fund balance in Kane Park. This concerns me because when we brought these concerns up to the mayor in our interest in wanting to receive this data, he told us that the numbers won't tell you the story that you want. And so, it's concerning to me that we're receiving this right now and being asked to transfer millions and millions of dollars between these funds. So, I guess is there a reason why the administration was not able to provide this information to us sooner?
So, I guess that's a question for me, yeah?
Or Mr. Feltz.
I'm the administration, yeah, okay. So, first, I'd like to say that the question about specifically the expenses of Kane Park operating as opposed to Kane Park as a park or some of the capital projects that are ongoing at Kane Park versus the specific money that was spent, as in a cost of goods sold kind of description of the expenses is a complicated thing to provide. And in this particular circumstance, yeah, we could provide you all of the numbers for all of our Kane Park-associated expenses. And yes, it wouldn't tell you the exact story. It wouldn't tell, it would answer the question that you're actually asking, which is, how much does it cost specifically to run a concert and theater venue at Kane Park? That's what you're asking for. No, that's not what you're asking for.
I asked why we were not able to get this.
No, I meant in the original question about the expenses for Kane Park operating. What you're actually asking for is, what is the number? What is the amount of money that it takes to run the concert venue and the theater? And I guess maybe the art gallery? You know, the lighting perhaps around the theater and the concert venue? What costs are included, what aren't? We could have, and the council president, I think presumably would like to, have a longer, more in-depth conversation about Kane Park. I'm answering the question.
Well, I just want to tell you specifically what the question was.
Oh, I heard the question, but it requires more of an explanation.
But what you repeated wasn't the question, wasn't, wasn't the request.
And so, he's asking how, why it took so long to get this? Well, for one, we're doing a whole hell of a lot of other things, like trying to stop you from making a ridiculous mistake in passing a three-month budget that you can't possibly, and frankly, we shouldn't be expected to create in a week for you after spending months working on a year-long budget where things are prioritized in a systemic way. So, as we're rolling up, as we're wrapping up our 2024 budget, as we've done the final cut of checks for the year, as we are closing out this year, that is when you get the transfers so that we can roll up this budget as we do every single year. It's as though this council has no memory. It's as though this council has never taken a look at previous budget experiences. We do this every year. This is not unusual. Now, you could, if you were willing to do the work of having another meeting, you could decide, you know what? We're going to punt this, we're going to think about it, we're going to talk about this, and we'll have another meeting and we will pass this so that we can close out the year. I know there was some talk about having a December 27th meeting. At a meeting, there was some talk about that.
Not with, not with us.
Oh, well, I guess you guys aren't willing, and that's fine. It's up to you. I actually did answer the question. The specific question was about why you're just getting this now. It's because we just ran the last check run. This is the roll-up at the end of the year that we do every year.
So, Mr. Mayor, the question that I think was originally asked by Kane Park was, on the revenue side, first of all, it was for the summer season. That was the question posed by myself, Councilman Cobb, and maybe some others. And the question was, how much revenue from ticket sales? How much revenue from concession? And then on the expense side, how much did we pay for staff? How much did we pay for the performers? How much did we pay for rental of equipment? And then other expenses? And what we were trying to do in the context, and this was in the context of making a decision about the budget. That was, that, those questions were asked in that context because every council, and certainly this council, should be trying to figure out, is this working? And do we want to fund it? Because that's, those are the kind of decisions we make. And then, you know, we already know that we're all pro Kane Park. That's not, that's not the issue.
That is not clear.
That's not the issue. The issue is, are we doing it in the best possible way? And all that, and we can't, and the only way we can figure that out is if we get the numbers. So, I don't know, I mean, I certainly understand Councilman Petrus's question, but the original question was the question that I just asked.
And so, your original question, then?
And it was in writing.
You're provided personal services figures for every single fund in detail, and you can look at Fund 214 if you want to. When you're provided, other than personal services, in detail, and you can look at Fund 214 if you want to. When you are provided the information that you ask for, you can't see it, but you're not willing to be educated by the people who know.
Well, I just can't disaggregate it from...
It's disaggregated. You can look at the detail in the documents that I've sent you already. And this is why your explanations of your concern about not getting the numbers ring hollow because you've been provided all of these numbers.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Just, I'm hearing this, there is no expense information provided at all, period. So, we didn't get everything. It's actually very simple. We weren't given any of the expense information. It's really very simple.
Mr. President, if I might, as the mayor said, this is an annual piece of legislation that is required under Ohio law in order to zero out any negative balances within all funds of the city. Last year, those transfers were in the neighborhood of $18 million. So, this year, a conservative number, working with Mr. Feltz, was utilized in the $10 million neighborhood. It's an amount not to exceed only as much money as is required to eliminate the deficit in any fund is authorized to be transferred. And there is, because of the status of the reporting and catching up, as he indicated, Section 3 provides that on completion of all the necessary transfers, the mayor will cause the preparation and delivery of a report detailing the final year-end transfers to council, not later than December 31st, which the clerk is then authorized and directed to append to this ordinance so that it will be made very transparent. So, that doesn't give you the specific fund negative balances tonight, but this is an annual requirement that needs to be executed before the end of the year. And so, this was something that we came up with based upon the information that we do have, which would allow council to fulfill that responsibility. Doesn't give up your right to receive the information and to do what council will with it going forward. But this is all about maintaining the good faith and credit of the city because it only addresses expenditures already made from city funds.
This is standard. This is not something to catastrophize about. This is not something to be concerned about. This is standard, we do it every year, it's required, and yet, we're making a meal of this. Which is why I think your motivations are suspect.
No, I really don't like the tone of this whole thing. I, when we have this stuff at home and we get it like days in advance and we look it over, maybe some of this incredulity happens in the privacy of our home. And, you know, when it's passed along, you know, as the legislation gets here, you're going to get a little bit of, I mean, I don't think it's abnormal to maybe ask a few questions and ask about information that we may not...
Mr. President, with all due respect, this is the first time we've passed.
I'm in the, I'm in the middle of a sentence. But, you know, this is the kind of information that when you just get it and you're seeing it, you're going to have to digest it a little bit. Did anybody, I saw some other people that might have had questions. Councilwoman Larson, go ahead.
Thank you. It looks like we only have two funds that are in the negative. Agreed, Mr. Feltz? Director Feltz?
Can you come up to the, yeah, because we can't hear you unless you're...
No, I think it's more than two that's projected to be in the negative.
So, what's projected is that the Kane Park Fund will be in the negative even after you transfer money?
No, the statute states that we need to have it at zero.
So, it will be at zero. This transaction will do that, correct?
Yes.
And same thing for the LedSafe Cuyahoga?
Yes.
It will be at zero?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You also have funds coming in for that particular one.
Thank you.
And that is specifically, sorry to interrupt, Mr. President, that is specifically the purpose is to bring them to zero. There's not another dollar that's authorized by those. And what is different this year is that typically there's a chart within the legislation that lays out the funds from which, really, general fund is almost all of it, from which transfers are being made and the negative or deficit funds to which it's being transferred. This was an attempt to allow the city to satisfy its legal obligations without incurring an additional penny of expense and then unfortunately providing council after the fact with all of the information about what those authorized expenditures were. And, because even if you knew, the law requires you to zero them out. But you'll have all of that by the end of the year, and my assumption is council will use that information on a going-forward basis.
Incidentally, Mr. President?
Yes.
Previous practice here at the city of Cleveland Heights was that the city manager was automatically authorized to transfer funds between funds in order to achieve that zero balance or positive balance in every fund of the city. This was automatic. This didn't need to come to council. The city manager was authorized to do that. We don't. We don't have that system now. We come to council as we have for years, every year, to provide this in accordance with the law.
Mr. President? Mr. Feltz, next to the Kane Park deficit, it says to eliminate negative fund balance and to pay for future expenses. What's the $130,000 in 2023 budget? Does that mean that we hadn't balanced it since then?
I'm going to have to look at the document. Does it come up now on the podium?
So, just, yeah, just follow the line to basically the right-hand column that's next to the negative $214,000. And then, yeah, I'm just, the sentence that says $130,000 in 2023 budget. I don't understand that kind of footnote, I guess.
I'm going to have to read... I'm going to have to read over that one. I'm not familiar with that, but I'm going to have to get back to you on that, if that's okay.
Sure. I may be able to assist a bit, if you're willing to.
Right now?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So, I did the brief work of looking up ordinance number 206, 2023. Now, this is quick work, so if there's more, we can look into more and provide more information. And I looked up the Kane Park Operating Fund, and I see that in 2023, at the end of 2023, we are increasing the Kane Park budget by $385,000, after increasing it by $1,600,000, let's see, or to $1,600,000, let me see this, for a total amended budget at the end of the year of $1.9 million, specifically in the Kane Park budget in Fund 215. Let's see. So, an additional adjustment there of $385,100 in December of 2023, I believe, was intended to bring that into the positive. And if I'm mistaken on that particular ordinance, I can continue looking and provide some more information.
I mean, I certainly understand how that would be possible. Any other questions? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. President, I have literally turned this mic on three times and called your name, and now you're going to call on somebody else.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I want to make that clear. No, no, I just want to acknowledge that. You can't say you didn't hear me. The public heard me. The mic was on. I don't know if it was purposeful, but this is ridiculous. Excuse me?
I...
So, you didn't hear me sitting right next to you when I turned this mic on and said, "Mr. President," right before he asked him the question for the third time?
No, I thought you were just pointing to the mayor, like he wanted to...
And saying your name.
But, please, go ahead.
You know what?
It's not a contest. Councilman Posh, you want to, I take it you had a question?
I suggest, oh, I didn't know. It's a really simple one. It's just very simple. Mr. Law Director?
Can you...
It's on. Mr. Law Director, can you take him, can I ask, can I ask you something?
Certainly.
Okay. The, I don't know what to feel about this. I mean, it's obviously just dumped on our lap. I understand that, you know, at the end of the year, there are certain things that you have to do to clean up finances, which is normal operating procedure. But this really is coming to us, just, I mean, everybody knew that this was the last meeting. And, you know, what happens if this does not pass this evening? Or can it wait until there's been more time to fully understand what we're asked to vote on?
Well, so I acknowledge the challenge of looking at this on short notice and without some of the numerical data that typically populates it.
Right.
If council is entertaining another meeting, I throw that out there as, with a big if, you know, I think that it is likely that this could be further developed by that time. It's not going to, that's not, wouldn't change the transfers that would be required, because it's all based upon those funds that have negative balances. But I think that's a possibility. If council doesn't approve it tonight or at some future date before the end of the year, I think probably the question becomes an audit finding from the state auditor and potentially the county budget commission is going to be unhappy. I don't know what those ramifications are.
Mr. Mayor?
Thinking about, what are the ramifications of passing it? What are the potential negative ramifications of passing it, Mr. Law Director?
Well, to the extent that that's a legal question, I think it's discomfort with the sort of granularity or the level of granularity of the detail.
So, discomfort is the negative ramification?
But the, right. But the, as I said a moment ago, the dollars that would be authorized to be transferred are fixed by the fund balances and specifically those funds that have a negative balance. That's the only amount of money that is authorized to be transferred.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, you know, certainly I remember doing this the last two years, and I understand what it's for. And I, you know, I am prepared to vote, although I'm, you know, obviously, everybody would like to have stuff, you know, in advance. But is there any objection to voting? I just want to make sure that my colleagues are all prepared to do that. Okay. Addie, why don't you call the roll?
I.
Kuta.
Yes.
Larson?
I'm going to support this bill, understanding that we are going to get more detail, and I'm trusting that the staff put this together the way that they wanted to, and I trust that the work is correct.
Maddox?
I hope the public is watching and realizes that this is what we're talking about. We're talking about making mountains out of nothing. And the fact that they have this information and they voted on this several times and now they're acting like they don't understand, it's problematic. My vote is yes for something that we've done multiple times, and we have all the information we need to do so for. Thank you.
Petrus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Posh?
I'm going to vote yes, but the only reason I'm going to vote yes for is that we have a commitment from the city to give us all the background information, which is different, I believe, from other votes on this. So, we are doing our best to try to trust staff in a very difficult situation where there's not a whole lot of trust going on right now. But this is, I understand why this has to get done, but I absolutely feel like we need to have the supporting information. Otherwise, it's going to wreak havoc on my trust meter.
All right, Addie, next piece of legislation? Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote yet. Oh, no, we...
You did, you did the roll call.
Sorry, go ahead.
I have ordinance number 271-2024 on first reading, an ordinance determining the need to, for, need for and imposing additional duties upon the Cleveland Heights Finance Department and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta.
All right, I'm actually withdrawing this legislation. It's just not necessary at this time. You can go on to the next piece.
I have ordinance number 272-2024 on first reading, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Chuni Panichi, Inc., for municipal financial accounting and other related professional services, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Council Member Posh.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I've got a little bit of discussion.
Well, I'm going to call on council first. Go ahead, Councilman Cobb.
So, yes, I, we were given a couple of references to check on. For the firm that we're proposing to engage, and today I talked to Cheryl Benedict, the finance director for the City of Willowick, that uses this firm for some of their accounting work and in particular handling their GAAP finance over reports. She said that the firm was outstanding, that Frank Icke in particular was very responsive, and she could not think of a more knowledgeable or better person to assist us in the area of municipal finance.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you. I support hiring a third party to review the financial records of this city. Council interviewed Frank Icke from the CNP Accounting Firm at last night's meeting. I'm concerned that the council's request for this review should not interfere with all the work that the finance department has in front of it right now. So, I'm suggesting that when they start that work, if we approve this tonight, I recommend we ask CNP look at the monthly and quarterly reports in January through September of 2024, because those are already done.
Right.
As well as the bank reconciliation statements for that same time period. And then, these reports should be readily available and not impose a great burden on finance staff. Thank you, Counselor Posh, for moving forward on locating a accounting firm that can provide council with the third-party view of the financial records of Cleveland Heights.
All right, other discussion? Councilman Maddox?
Thank you. I just want to make sure the public is aware of the fact that this firm has stated that they've never done this work before. This is the only firm they interviewed, and it was just yesterday, and they're preparing to pass this legislation today. Thank you.
All right, I want to make it clear that they've done the work exactly, the work that we're asking them to do. Go ahead, Councilman Posh.
Thank you, President Kuta. I think, as we've seen tonight, there is a very large gap between some of us and what we believe is trustworthy information and not trustworthy information. Part of this effort, and the reason I'm suggesting it, is so we can heal that trust. So, I'm going to vote for this. That's why I was advocating for it. And I hope everything is going to come out okay, and we're all going to be able to sing kumbaya when it's all done.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you wanted to say something?
No, I don't want to step in front of any council members that might have something to say.
I don't think any, I don't know.
Everybody else done?
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so I've got a series of questions for council. Is my understanding, based on this discussion, that only one firm was interviewed? How many firms were contacted?
Councilman Posh?
Two.
Okay, out of those, just two, do you know how many firms do this kind of work in the area?
A lot.
Just a lot?
I mean, I mean, how...
Did you select, was it just two for expediency purposes, or three quotes was too many?
It was done for expedience purposes, because we have a lot of budget conversations. We want to get this done. We want to get it behind us. We were trying to pass a temporary budget. I looked out through some of the government resources I had and asked, you know, of all the people that you know across all my network of people, who could we hire immediately that you have a lot of trust for? So, I started with the references before I started just picking up the phone and dialing.
Okay.
And I got two organizations.
Two, okay.
And I figured between those two, we, there would be a very, very good one that would bubble to the top.
Okay, so for professional services, you do not have to do a formal bid? You're not required to? You can just select who you want to? Yet, best practice in government contracting is to get more quotes, to get more proposals for a couple of different reasons. And I'll tell you the reasons, and then I'm going to ask you another question. The first reason is because we want to be stewards of the public money, and we don't want to pay more for the same services than we have to, right? That's one important goal. Second important goal is to ensure that we are casting a wider net than sometimes might be found in one of your networks, because there are people potentially who do this kind of financial consulting work that maybe come from a DBA or an FBE or an MBE that we might want to include in the recruitment. You know, Cleveland Heights, as we've been told, is some model of tolerance. And so, it should be reflected in our contracting purchases, to the degree that we can. Was there any thought about minority representation or female-owned business entity representation in the selection of this firm?
Mayor, we're in a crisis situation right now.
So, no?
Where the trust between council members and members of this administration is at stake right now. And in the spirit of trying to get a group in here quickly, as opposed to going through a protracted interviewing process, we just don't have the time for that right now. We have community members that are here that have expressed concerns about things like, why don't we have an audited financial statement for 2023? We know the answer is because the city has not provided the information to the state.
Out of the answer, but I can provide you a bit more of the answer if you'd like me to speak.
You know, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to get a third party in here that's going to advise us, a neutral third party. One thing about accountants and lawyers is that, you know, just because you're paying their bill, we don't get to dictate what they're going to say, okay? They have a certain amount of bonding experience, they've got professional liabilities insurance. I mean, these are people that just can't say what maybe we would want to hear or make up for maybe a political purpose. They're going to give us the truth. And that's what accountants do, and that's the purpose of like an audited financial statement. You sort of get the truth out of things. So, you know, I know where you're going with this, but I'm not going to delay it.
Just a question.
And I don't think council's going to delay this.
So, the answer was no? That there was no consideration of those...
I want one person to finish, and then we'll...
I think that's what I started off by saying, but no.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, just for clarification, you're stating that there was no search, no look at diversity at all because of expediency? I just, that's what, because I'm hearing this for the first time. So, you brought in one person, one organization, you had to only interview one, and you're telling me that the reason that we couldn't possibly look into any diverse organizations because you got to do this right now? At the same time that you guys are saying, oh, there's no undertones, there's no bigotry, there's no anything, but we're not going to look at women or minorities at all? So, in other words, DEI goes out the window for expediency with this council, is what I just heard. So, if that's not what I heard, please clarify, because that just, I'm blown away by that as an excuse to not go after any other firms. And we know that this is something that I focus on big time. And there is no excuse for a corporate organization or a government organization to decide that diversity has to get a pause because you're in a rush. So, could you clarify that statement for me tonight?
Well, where was your voice when we were talking about this? And why, and why are you just mentioning this right now to us?
You round out six to one?
Next question?
No, you had plenty of opportunities.
All right, you know what?
I'm glad you brought that up. You're right. And the last thing I asked last night is, are we going to interview anyone else to what you guys reply? We're going to write this legislation and talk about it tomorrow. So, if we're going to say that, did I not ask this council this last night? Don't play. Just not play dumb tonight. I asked you all before you closed out the meeting last night, and you dismissed me. That's why I'm asking now. So, since you're asking why I didn't say anything, I did. But much like tonight, this council doesn't listen. They never listen. They've decided, because they have a majority, that whatever's coming out of my mouth is useless. I asked these exact questions last night to this council, when the council president said, "We're going to write this legislation and talk about it tonight." So, let's talk about it tonight. Why are we not looking or expanding that search or had any interest in diversity? I want to know, because this is the first time I'm hearing it since I asked last night, and no one said a word. So, let's talk about it, because this is the stuff that the community is out here talking about, that this almost all-white council keeps dismissing. These are the things that we're constantly hearing. And I find it very odd that the only people that continue to say that there's no racism in this issue is white folks coming in here. You don't hear black folks coming in City Hall saying that stuff. I wonder why. So, let's just pause that.
Councilman Maddox, could we just take the temperature down just a little bit?
Was there any interest in diversity, in DEI? This conversation didn't come up last night when I asked, and you're telling me because you're in a rush, it's not important now? This is exactly, for the public's wondering, why I'm on this council? Because we railroad things and don't even care about things like diversity. That's why I'm here. Thank you so much for that answer. But if you would like to clarify and tell me how I'm wrong, I'd like to hear, because you're about to vote on something. And there was no interest in a diversity search at all, I just heard. And I do not let that stand. I told you all on this council I wouldn't. There's no excuse for that.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
I've got an additional financial question.
One more question, please.
So...
And then we got to move on.
I see the date on this proposal is December 19th, 2024. I recognize council doesn't like getting things the day of, and sometimes it's necessary. Obviously, this was necessary. But I just wanted to point that out, just in case anybody complains about getting something from me on the day of being asked to take a look at it. But I'm, you know, that's an aside. The real question is, we've got some financial numbers in here for the costs, and I'm wondering, did the other firm, and I know you didn't reach out to more firms to get more estimates of what this service might cost, did the other firm provide any proposal with cost information?
Councilman Posh, what I think...
It was actually shared with all council members in a packet I gave them, I believe, a week or two ago.
So, you had two, and was this the lowest?
I don't necessarily know if it was the lowest, but they're all in the ballpark. This is the one that gave us a municipal discount, and the other ones didn't.
The other one?
The other one, Ray and Associates, did not offer that. The Ray and Associates engagement was being run out of a Mid-Ohio office. This is run out of a Beachwood office.
And how long ago was that, that you requested those proposals?
A week or two ago. I don't remember when it was.
Okay, so let's say hypothetically it was two weeks ago. You've given this a lot of time. Again, I have to go back to, why just two? If we're talking about... lot of time. Again, I have to go back to, why just two, if we're talking about maximizing and stretching the public dollar? Competition is important. Normally, for this sort of thing, informal quotes, we get at least three quotes, unless the market for that particular service is extremely restricted.
You know, Mayor, it's, you know, I know that...
Sorry, are these invasive questions?
No, no, they're not. But you know what, this is, you're just sort of like, you don't like this idea. You're trying to throw a lot of shade on me with it. And that's fine.
Listen, we're going to have to go one at a time, please.
We've had plenty of time as a council to talk about this. If this was a particular issue with the DI, with Councilman Maddox, then it should have been brought up yesterday. And there's plenty of opportunity to bring this up. I'm just not going to answer any more of your questions.
Okay.
All right. You know, I do see the page with the discount on it. And Councilman Cobb, thank you for doing that research. All right, it's been moved and seconded and talked about. Addie, you want to call the roll?
Cobb?
Aye.
Kuta?
Aye.
Maddox?
Expediency is never a reason to throw out diversity, equity, or inclusion. No.
Larson?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
All right. Now we're on to second readings.
Anthony, would you pass this down? Thank you. I have resolution number 260-2024 on second reading. A resolution substituting the scope of, oh, excuse me, as amended 1219-2024. A resolution substituting the scope of work for the grant to Reaching Heights, Inc., originally authorized through ordinance number 179-2023, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Cleveland Heights University Heights School District and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Posh. So moved.
Is there a...
Oh, my apologies, guys. Hold on one second. I read the old title because I had the old one in front of me. One second.
Addie, just so I understand this, you're going to read the title from the...
From the new one, not from, yeah, from the one I just handed to you guys. My apologies. I have resolution number 260-2024 on second reading, amended 1219-2024. A resolution substituting a new scope of work for the grant to Reaching Heights, Inc., for the scope previously authorized through ordinance number 179-2023, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Posh. So moved.
Is there a second? I would think Councilman Posh would second his...
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Let me just say, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
There is a substantial difference between this presented version and the one that was initially presented to us. Law Director, can you just give a quick overview of the change?
Sure, thank you, Councilman. So the prior version, pre-amendment, contemplated the city negotiating an agreement with the school district to obtain an offset or apply an offset against payments in lieu of taxes being contributed to the schools pursuant to compensation agreements between the city and the school district in the amount of the grant. And upon some further research, the law department determined that that wasn't required. And so this resolution, as amended, substitutes and approves the new scope attached to the Reaching Heights proposal, and declares that to be a proper public purpose and an appropriate governmental service, and does not require negotiating with the schools or working out some third-party, potentially complicated, potentially time-consuming process.
Thank you. I'd like to point out, I believe this is the last piece of legislation that council's going to have to pass regarding spending the ARPA money. Is that accurate?
I think it's right.
I think that's a point of celebration. So this is the last piece of legislation for the nonprofit piece to it, that council, the council before me, decided to share with our, you know, share the ARPA money with our nonprofits. I'd really like to thank the law department for doing all that work and taking the lead, and fixing a very bad relationship with Guide House, and just getting all that together. That's been an incredibly rocky road. But I do appreciate the work. And I know it's a lot more than just the law department. It's the service department with all the sewer stuff. I mean, I could go on and on and on. It's planning.
Multi-departmental.
It's everybody. It's a holistic thank you for everybody. And, you know, there's been an echoing sediment, which is a bunch of misinformation about how this council doesn't really care and appreciate its employees. And I'm, you know, I think I personally disagree with that. And I do thank everybody.
Thank you. And let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number 265-2024 on second reading. An ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, for the period of January 1, 2025, through March 31, 2025, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta.
So moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is the temporary budget. This is, just so people who are watching understand it. Any discussion? Councilwoman Larson, always willing to go first. I appreciate that.
First of all, I want to thank all the employees that came tonight. Even though they're no longer here, I think they should understand that I appreciate everything they do for the city. I also want to say that I appreciate all the residents who've stayed there with us this evening through this difficult journey. Thank you, Councilor Petrus, for doing the work to prepare the actual expenditures. Thank you, Addie, for helping council move forward during this process. This temporary budget ensures that all city staff, vendors, and contractors are paid while we complete a 12-month budget. The mayor has mentioned several times that he wishes to work with the council finance committee to make sure the city has a 12-month budget, including capital requests from the directors. The finance committee will meet Tuesday, January 14, at 6:00 p.m. It's on the calendar. You're welcome to come and join us, Mayor. And at that meeting, the agenda will include any updates on information council has requested, for instance, on the 2023 audit, the Archer classification and compensation study, and monthly and year-end financial statements. The committee agenda will also include scheduling future meetings of the finance committee, at least through March. An additional item for discussion will be a capital budget for 2025, which will hopefully include a new fire engine, updated repairs and repaired kitchens for fire halls. For the police department, a live-scanned fire print computer system, and five more hybrid electric vehicles, plus upfitting for those vehicles, installation of the Dennison Park splash pad, and more. Council administration can work together to produce a data-supported budget for 2025 via a process that's transparent, and that provides a roadmap for achieving clear, measurable goals for this moment and for the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Posh?
I would also like to thank Councilperson Petrus for putting this together. We all expected this was going to come from the city with the city's help. We were told it was going to. We've been reminded by, you know, multiple lawyers and citizens who worked and adjusted our charter to say it's a charter responsibility for staff to put together this budget, which they chose not to do. I think everybody has to understand that, just like every budget, it's an estimate. So these are, this is an estimate for the first three months of the year. It might be off. But the advantage of an estimate is it could be amended. And I think it needs to be understood loud and clear, where if any of these numbers are off, or if the administration is fearful that there is something not included in here and it needs to be included, and we were given a couple of examples with staff. You know, one of them was a vacuum truck, is a half a million-dollar vacuum truck that's being, you know, paid out of the northeastern Ohio sewer district. And the concern was, some monies had to be allocated in order to make sure that that purchase went through. Well, I would expect, that's a big capital item, that's something that clearly we understand that a department wants and needs. It should be given to the finance committee, or it should be discussed in the weekly, if they're not canceled, meetings between the mayor and council leadership, so we can get in our agenda to make these changes. There's a track record of this council voting, I believe, 99%, 100% of the time with what the administration would like to have. So there's a track record and a history of this council working with the administration. I just so happen to see our police chief in the corner. I know there's equipment that he needs with, I believe, a fingerprint scanner. There's a planning department that said that they needed to purchase software. I'm expecting those items to come forth to council if they need to be amended in this budget so they come through. So there is no reason that the government is shutting down and the services aren't going to be permitted. If there's a payroll issue here and we have to adjust a personal services account, I will tell you, there's 100% willingness to do this. So when we hear things like, the sky is falling, this is not going to work, bring your children to a council meeting because your job is on the line. You know, we are not instilling any kind of fear. That fear is coming from, I'm sorry, Mayor, the mayor's office, okay? And I am disappointed that that is the tactic that is taken, but I look at this work as a constructive stepping stone, so we can get a budget, and we can build some trust with the administration, and get the numbers, and get the numbers on a timely basis, please. So thank you again, Councilperson Petrus, for putting this together.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So we voted no, obviously, on this temporary budget. And part of the reasons, I want you to hear everything that Councilman Posh just stated, because everything, every amendment, every change, every edit could actually be done to a full year's budget. But yet, they're choosing to do these things to a budget that was made in someone's living room. And yet, you're expecting our city staff and our residents to be okay with that. So they're going to vote on a budget and then make all of these changes, when they could simply vote on a year's-long budget and do the exact same thing with accurate numbers from professionals here at City Hall and the people who know this work. But instead, they're going to vote on something that was put together last night, again, in someone's living room or wherever they did it, and bring it in here in hopes that it works. That's the government that you have. That's the council that you have. That's the level of competence that we've decided to put out there for the residents. I don't know about you, but I don't feel comfortable with that. And if I was telling you that I was a person running those numbers at night in my living room, looking across from my grandkids, I think you would have concern. I think our firefighters and our police department would have concern. I think our employees would have concern. Everything, every amendment, every change they can make, they could do this to the full budget. They're choosing not to. You want to talk about people playing games? These are folks playing games. You've just heard for the last several weeks, there are no experts on this council, but yet, they just decided to do this and put this together. They have not reached out, they have not reached out and asked the directors who were right in their face last night at a meeting when I asked them three times. They're refusing this information and then stating that the mayor is withholding from them. I guarantee you, these numbers are wrong. So we're going to have to do some major changes. We could be doing that to a year's-long budget and not wasting your time, but instead, for political reasons, we're going to try to run this city into the ground and do it ourselves. I'm voting no on this, and I think it's clear why. This is irresponsible. I wouldn't run a business this way, let alone a government, from someone's living room numbers, when we have clear numbers and a clear roadmap to how to do this properly. We've been elected to lead, not play make-believe.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? Councilman Petrus?
Firstly, I'd like to thank the staff for coming here this evening. I'd like to thank those folks who are already, who are still here. I am grateful that every day I get to work with so many talented people. Even as a resident, I have so much more appreciation now that I'm on council for how dedicated, how intelligent, how knowledgeable, how committed everyone in our city government is. And so I'd like to thank you. While we would ideally pass a budget for the entire year, a majority of council members repeatedly expressed their preference that we first pass a temporary budget, because the mayor's budget was incomplete and painted an inaccurate picture. His budget projected a million-dollar deficit, but it did not include millions more of known expenses, such as salary adjustments as a result of a recent salary survey and the mayor's many unofficial capital request. This means that the deficit would be significantly larger than the $1 million projected, and exacerbated further by concerns that I have about the mayor's estimated revenues. For example, the mayor estimated a 33% increase in interest revenue, even though our interest earning assets are going down. And he estimated a 40% increase in our property tax revenue, even though, for example, our neighbor, Shaker Heights, estimated just a 3.5% increase. I repeatedly raised these concerns. So surely, the mayor updated his budget, right? No. Between the time when it was introduced and the time when we voted on it, the mayor did not update one single number in that budget. So this was more than just a matter of answering questions. This was a matter of the mayor's budget remaining incomplete. We have been told that we need to maintain a $12 million reserve. Passing the mayor's budget would have put the city on a trajectory where, in as little as a year, our reserves would have been depleted. Because of their concerns for the mayor's budget, six of seven council members asked for a temporary budget. While the charter says that the mayor shall compile a budget in the form and detail required by council, the mayor made clear that he had no interest in working with council on the creation of a temporary budget. The mayor asked, who on council is going to do it? I worked with my fellow council members to identify a approach that we could all agree to. And because council members do not have access to the systems that generate financial reports, I spent many hours manually creating a budget exhibit. The amended 2024 budget, which we all voted for, is the foundation for this temporary budget, provides over $30 million for personnel, operating, and capital expenses. And I reached out to the mayor earlier this week and asked if he would like to provide a list of capital expenses that he'd ideally make during the first quarter of the year. He chose to not provide those capital expenses, but the administration will be able to request adjustments as is necessary. After passing this, I look forward to continuing to work with my fellow council members and the administration to flesh out a longer budget for the year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cobb?
Thank you. Until the mayor's rejected budget legislation, I have supported every single piece of legislation the mayor has ever submitted to council. I have pointed out situations on more than one occasion where I believed other council members were engaged in a political power struggle with the mayor or trying to undermine his power and authority. Earlier this year, I stated that council's rejection of his appointments to certain committees, and then taking away his appointment power was, in my view, petty and vindictive. I mention all of this only as a preface to my remarks, in the hope that it will lend some credibility to what I have to say. And to be clear, I am not part of any alleged faction on this council. Some of my colleagues have stated that they have unanswered questions that preclude them from voting on the budget submitted by the mayor. To be fair, the mayor has attempted to answer their questions, and I will leave it up to others to determine the timeliness and adequacy of those answers. My concerns, and why I am voting for this temporary budget and cannot vote on the mayor's budget, go deeper than any unanswered questions. The power to approve, reject, or change the budget proposed by the mayor is solely councils. Once finalized, only council can authorize changes, and its approval must be set for contracts, must be sought, rather, for contracts and expenditures above a certain amount. City council is the only guardrail in our government when it comes to financial matters. However, in those financial matters, we have to rely on and trust our finance department that is headed by a director of finance, usually someone that is well-versed and experienced in the nuances of municipal finance, which in addition to requiring the knowledge of general accounting principles, requires familiarity with the various provisions of the Ohio Revised Code that impose numerous financial requirements on municipalities. During the budget process in 2023, we had an extremely experienced and well-credentialed financial, finance director, Andy Yenetic, who we had a level of trust and faith in, particularly in respect to the numbers and budget projections we were given. We had faith and confidence in his advice, and that he had the necessary fortitude to push back against either council or the mayor when it came to spending and budget requests. And let me flatly say, I don't have a racist or anti-woman bone in my body, and I am offended to suggest that my unhappiness... to suggest that my unhappiness with the situation has anything to do with the acting finance director at the time being a woman. Before we took a final vote on the budget for 2024, we knew exactly where the city stood financially in every account as of November 30th, 2023. Before we voted, we had what we believed to be a reliable estimate as to where the city would end the year in 2023, and with the proposed budget, where we would be at the end of 2024, being now. Equally important, we were confident that there were no financial or accounting improprieties occurring in this city. Let me repeat. Equally important, we were confident that there were no financial or accounting improprieties occurring in this city. After the budget was finalized, Mr. Yunetic retired, and the city's lone financial analyst was promoted by the mayor to be the acting finance director. Presumably, this was intended to be an interim appointment, and the mayor never elevated her to the finance director. Further, when she was elevated, no replacement was hired to fill the now vacant financial analyst position, leaving that interim finance director to do the work of two people. This year, we were given budget materials at the last minute, literally passed out to us as we were sitting on the dais waiting for the department hearings to begin, which were over several days. My sense was then, and it remains the case now, that the budget that was put together was done so by an overwhelmed finance department and reliance on overly optimistic revenues and no clear picture of where we were going to end this year or where we would be at the end of next year. At some point during late October or early November, leading up to the budget hearings, the interim finance director gave her two-week notice. Incredibly, there was no disclosure of this to city council. We sat during these budget hearings with no mention of the fact that she was leaving. Why was this kept hidden from us during budget hearings? And why, at the most crucial time during the year for the budget process, would someone suddenly tender their resignation? Since last month, we have learned that the finance department has failed to provide information requested by the Ohio Auditor's Office to complete the audit for 2023. We know that some city bills have gone unpaid for months. In fact, I left an event earlier this evening where someone came to me and said that they had not been paid since last summer for work that had been done. Only in the last month have we learned the depth of the problems in our finance office, and only recently were steps taken by the mayor to address that by hiring Mr. Phelps from a temporary agency. He acknowledged to us in the meeting last night what a mess the finance office was in and that it remains overwhelmed. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on outside consultants. Why didn't the mayor engage a major accounting firm specifically with municipal accounting experience the moment it became known that the finance department was underwater and remains so today? The last financial report we have been provided is from September 30th. Mr. Phelps told us last night that he is working on the reports for October and November, and he hopes to get them to us in two weeks. With our accounting software, why can't a report be provided sooner than that? And as I said earlier, last year, we had updated financials given to us before we finally voted on the budget. There are so many red flags that I cannot in good conscience do anything but vote for a temporary budget. Lastly, and bear with me, the public should know that these city employees were here tonight based on an email request that was sent to all of the employees urging them to come and bring their families, and we would provide meals for them. I am, I don't have the words to say how upset I am that city employees are being pitted against the city council that has always taken care of our city employees. I can't describe how upset I am that this is being made out to be council's fault for the situation that we find ourselves in today, because we are doing our job. Thank you for bearing with me.
Mayor?
Are all the council members done?
For now. Go ahead.
For now, okay.
Go ahead.
So, I want to talk about some revenue questions. We've got a council member who is very concerned about the estimate that the interim finance director received from the county about the expected increase in our property tax. It goes to the city. Now, I wish this wasn't necessary, but I'm going to have to, for the edification of the people watching and this council apparently, provide a bit of explanation about property taxes, what they fund and how, because apparently, you don't understand. When property valuations rise in a community, the corresponding tax that a homeowner feels doesn't rise by the same amount or the same percentage. The reason for that is House Bill 920. There is a restriction on the amount that the homeowner pays relative to the rise in their property values. So that means that in Cleveland Heights, when property values rose by 44%, it doesn't mean that a homeowner's tax on their home goes up by 44%. It doesn't mean that, right? So what does House Bill 920, what does House Bill 920 actually impact? It impacts school district funding, because the school district passes a levy, or really the people pass a levy, for a specific amount of funding for a school district. And so when the property value goes up, it might mean that if your particular property goes up in value by a factor less than the average in the community, your property tax might actually go down. It's an interesting, slightly complicated system that most people don't understand. However, the value that accrues to the city from property tax is not affected by them. So the value that the city receives as a result of the increased valuation of the properties in the city is roughly corresponding with the value that we expect to receive in the form of property taxes. Now, in Cleveland Heights, the county has increased the value of the properties by 44%. And with the expectation that there will be potentially Board of Revision challenges to these property valuation increases, the finance director, in coordination with the county, decided to estimate value less than the increase in value for the properties in Cleveland Heights. This is a relatively conservative thing to do. Now, other communities might do it differently. Now, I can't imagine, though, where the expertise on this council lies that would second-guess what the county and the former finance director estimated. I don't know. And maybe you've got a great deal of property valuation and property tax experience, that's not something I've heard. So I was relying on people who do the work at the county, people who do the work at the city, to prepare these estimates. Estimates, I might add, were informed through the consulting work of the former finance director, Andy Yunetic, who worked on this budget. And this is where my concern about your motivations comes into focus. It was his work. Andy Yunetic's work provided the unencumbered fund balance projections that you relied on in 2024, and guess what? They also were provided by him this year. But when you receive that information in a different package, suddenly, the information's suspect. The same person created that report that you were provided, by me. So I want to point out, Mr. Yunetic was contracted to work with the interim finance director. The administration did not just leave her to twist in the wind without assistance. Now, I'm coming to realize, and I've been informed at a late date, that more assistance was required. And to that end, I'm providing a great deal of that assistance as somebody with experience in municipal finance as well. Of course, Mr. Phelps is also here to provide additional assistance, and more people, including somebody that I've recently transferred into finance, is providing assistance with the work that finance needs to do in order to make sure that the ship is righted. So I want to point out that a lot of what you're hearing related to the crafting of this budget is simply not true. Mr. Cobb would like us to believe that he can accept information from Mr. Yunetic, but when it comes from someone else, me, for instance, the same information crafted by the same man, just handed over by a different man, is somehow suspect, untrustworthy. Andy Yunetic has been working as a consultant for the finance department through the entire year, virtually. So I want to point this out, but when we come to another question about revenue, this highlights either an incuriosity or, I mean, certainly ignorance, and that's fine. There's nothing wrong with ignorance, it's not an insult, I've got a great deal of it. When I am ignorant on a subject, I tend to try to learn. In this case, we're talking about investment income. Yeah, we're making predictions. And this very reductive analysis of our interest-bearing accounts are decreasing. When are they decreasing? On what schedule? How long is the money going to be in the bank as we continue to expend things like ARPA dollars? Are we spending all of the ARPA dollars all at once? Are we, are we, are we cutting, you know, $30 million in checks on one day? Are we still bearing interest over the course of a period of time as the work gets done through 2026 and beyond? So you may think that January 1, our interest-bearing accounts are zeroed out. It's simply not the case. Additionally, these estimates were provided to you by finance professionals, including Tara Schuster and Andy Yunetic, with an eye toward our interest rates. And with information about our interest rates, which was explained to you in the packet that you received initially. But obviously, it wasn't read. Either it wasn't read or it was simply discarded. The information that we provide is habitually discarded in this case. Additionally, I'd like to address a comment that was made about me refusing to participate in council's exercise to create a three-month budget and the request for a one-day or even one-week analysis of a prioritization of capital projects. When I introduced a budget, I deliberately excluded Fund 402 from that conversation. The reason why, I've said this before, but it appears to fall on deaf ears, the reason why I deliberately excluded that is because I wanted to have a collaborative conversation to prioritize how we spend funds from Fund 402, finance capital projects. Fund 402, expenditure from Fund 402, does not impact our general fund unencumbered balance in any way. We can have a conversation about what capital we are going to pursue and prioritize, we can have a conversation, a year-long schedule, about whether or not something that occurs in February is more or less important than something that occurs in September. Under a three-month budget, we can't have that conversation. So you're asking the wrong question, and I've explained that to you in detail. We cannot prioritize effectively if we don't have any certainty about what capital projects we will be able to fund toward the end of the year, because we don't know after you've funded capital projects for the first three months, what will be left, what council will be willing to expend. A year-long schedule allows us a greater degree of flexibility and reliance and planfulness. So yes, I didn't want to rush into council's arbitrary determinations about funding three months of capital projects for things that we can't even necessarily be sure that we'll be able to get through a contracting and a bidding process for in the first three months. We can't always be sure of that. It's disheartening. I've said this a lot recently. It's disheartening that council doesn't grasp this or simply doesn't accept it, and it leads me to believe that it doesn't matter what we say. And I go back to all of your thanks, all of your gratitude for the work that the city staff do. Almost to tears, it sounded like, with the gratitude. That's lovely, that's lovely, but words are not as important as actions. Now, the idea that one of my staff members might invite other staff members to voluntarily show support for what is the best thing to do in this government, providing them an opportunity to advocate for themselves, I don't tell these people what to say. And it's offensive that you would think, first of all, I mean, hey, I've been called many things over the course of my service with this city. I mean, it seems like we've got, you know, same cast of characters from nine years ago on this dais. But I take offense, special offense, to this characterization that my employees would come in here under some threat. Now, I know, and I'm going to give some evidence for this. We've got some employees who work for the city, who are regularly on social media saying negative things about me. They don't like the job I'm doing. They prefer a different mayor. You know how difficult their lives have been because of that? Not at all. Because I don't restrict people's freedom of speech in that way. Now, I recognize that some of these staff members were scared to come talk to you and tell you how they feel. Now, what all I wanted to do was provide an opportunity for anybody to express that the best course of action is to provide a level of certainty and stability in the workplace here, without threat, without concern that their particular salary or benefits package might be targeted. Because based on this experience, you're talking about trusting me. Why should they trust you? Furthermore, let's talk about who crafts what. Whose responsibility is it to craft the budget? It's my responsi, oh, I'm responding to the various things that council members have said through the course of, and I need to correct the record when factual inaccuracies are presented before the public.
I don't have a problem with-
I would like to restrict that.
No, 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 no.
Are you interrupting me for a different reason?
No, I just would like to wind it up because you're speaking a lot longer than everybody else.
Anybody here has the opportunity to speak, and I have the opportunity to speak-
I'm just trying to keep it-
-in the same way that members of this body do.
Trying to keep it somewhat even, so if you could finish up, I'd appreciate it.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
I may have to respond to other factual inaccuracies as people respond to my fact-checking.
Yeah, we're not going to do that.
However, so let's continue working on this question of who crafts what. It is my charter responsibility to provide an estimate of the revenues and expenditures for the ensuing year, not the ensuing three months. The ensuing year, by November 15th. That's my- That's my responsibility, which I fulfilled. I provided you an estimate of our expected revenues and expenditures for the ensuing year. On capital, we had $4.6 million of capital expenditure in the budget that I presented to you. There may be additional capital that I hoped to have a collaborative conversation about prioritization with the council. And every time I brought it up, I was ignored. Kind of like the employees that you thanked tonight. I think Mr. Cobb started his statement with an attempt to separate himself from the bias that he's identified among his colleagues against me. That was the statement. He has identified biases among his colleagues against me, the mayor. Now, I don't know that Mr. Cobb expected to highlight this particular idea. But Mr. Cobb, where do you think that bias went between then and now? Did it dissolve? Did it float away? If you could please find your way to decorum.
I, excuse me, I'm the chair. I'm the chair. I asked her to be quiet.
And then right after Ms. Lash has told the mayor to shut up. So I need you to-
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Control the audience. This is disrespectful in what we're talking about.
I'm going to chair the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Please control the audience like you do us. Thank you. That's disrespectful. Every two seconds, she's telling him to shut-
Point of order, point of order.
Recognize the mayor is recognized.
And I'm asking you to control your meeting. He shouldn't have to deal with that while he's talking to the residents.
Mr. Mayor?
So I would like to, as an aside, I would like to support Councilman Anthony Maddox's point of order that it is important. And I hope that the residents in attendance can respect and recognize the business that this council does. I am not a member of this body. I am a guest of a particular sort that is empowered to participate in the discussions of council by the charter. In that way, I am a member of this discussion. Members of the discussion are afforded certain rights and responsibilities. Members of the audience are afforded more limited rights and have responsibilities for decorum that are supposed to be enforced by the chair. And as somebody participating in this discussion, I would ask the chair that as interruptions present themselves and vulgarities periodically and, you know, orders to shut up, if you could please proactively address those even when those people are your friends. That's a request from me. I think for now, I'm going to stop, but I would like the opportunity, as more council members, I'm sure, will have things to say about this, I would like to have the opportunity to correct the record when factual inaccuracies are presented.
We're not going to do that, but thank you, Mayor. Council Vice President Russell.
A lot has been said tonight, and I am not going to repeat what I believe is the right thing to do financially for our city, which is to support the temporary budget. There have been many red flags for all of us, no, not all of us, six of us, that we feel that a temporary budget is necessary. But I want to speak to something that Patrick said. First of all, I want to thank all our city employees, our public employees, because I am a public employee, and I've been a public employee for over 42 years. And every public employee know that your salary by name or position is open to public requests. That is the law. The budget of the city makes up almost 75% of salary and benefits. I asked for it by name because positions change. And I wanted to know by department, by name, and salary of individuals. It is not for intimidation. It's for information. It is for information. You need a full picture of all information. And yes, I did request that, just like anybody can request that of a public employee. I am subject to the same, same public request as a school employee. First of all, most of the staff that came in here today may be four or five I might have known or come in contact with. The most, the rest of them, I hadn't, that's probably the first time I ever laid eyes on them. Because it is true. I have not been a part of being invited to meet with the directors or speak with the directors. So no, I did not know. I don't know most of them. So I can't say anything about being racist or being negative to employees. And to the employees, if you remember, a while back, I was the person who, since I've been on this council, have been talking about raising your salary. That you work very hard with low wages. If you remember, I am the employee, I am the councilperson who said you need to have a union. I was told, because I'm a labor leader, I could not bring that legislation forward. But I had a councilperson over there, Mr. Council Petras, who was going to also move that legislation forward, and we were told we could not do that. So that's why the union legislation did not come forward. I've been talking about salaries in this city since I've been on council for five years. So for Mr. Patrick to stand there and tell me I don't care about employees, you got another thing coming. It is very true and very obvious that Mr. Patrick hates all of council, because I have never, ever, in five years since he's been here, no, since he's been here, I have never had a conversation with that man, not one. If I look up to speak to him, he refuses to speak and roll his eyes. Why? I do not know, because I have never, ever, ever had a conversation with him. So for him to tell me about what I do around employees and labor rights and thinking about employees here in this city, my first duty is to the employees and to the residents of this city. And I will protect any employee in any harm. If your pay, if you don't get your pay, it will not be because of council. It will not be because of council. If someone shuts down not getting paid, if someone shuts down, things are not moving forward, it will not be because of council have demanded it or requested it. It will not be on our back. So I would need all the employees to understand that. You are safe and protected far as getting your wages. You are safe and protected about moving forward for the next three months. And guess what? And even further, because the money is there. We on council here have promised that we will make sure that you get paid and all bills get paid. This city is not going to fall apart. But I do have a question. Why is it such a big deal to check and balance a budget for this city? Everything could be totally right, but what's wrong with us looking at it? What's wrong with us scrutinizing it? What is wrong with that? We are charged with the finances of this city. Any red flag, we have a right to ask the question. We have a right to scrutinize. If we don't understand, we have a right to ask the question 40 times until we do understand it. The narrative is being painted for political reasons so that you hear this narrative all the time. Council don't know. Council's stupid. Council does. I am insulted that a mayor can call, sit here and call his council a liar's. I am insulted that we can sit here and you can tell the feeling of council from the administration on how he has spoken about us sitting here, right here in our face. We have never disrespected him. Not in this council meeting. And let me give you something else. I am a black woman, sitting on this council, and I have never, ever been discriminated against. Not on this council, but I can tell you one thing. I do feel discriminated against my own kind, because black can discriminate against black. And I do feel that. But I do not feel any discrimination from Mr. Posh, from Mr. Cuda, from Mr. Cobb, sorry.
You remember him.
Cuda, Cobb, Larson, or Petras. I don't feel that. I've been on this council for five years. The first two years under the old administration. Under the new administration, I bet you this council can tell you. Anything I bring forward has been shut down. Anything I've talked about has laid on a desk. Everything I've brought to this thing to make things better has been on hold. And you know what? Administration and people in this city talk. People who work here talk. And there's a lot of information that we get from council of what's happening and what's going on about, splash pads still never gone, nowhere. Sitting, been on desks. It's a whole lot of things that's been happening, is going on. But yes, I've been totally discriminated against. I feel, and that's my feeling. So I want everybody knowing this residence, we can stop this racial stuff. We can stop that when it come here to council. Because I'm letting you know, as a black woman, and everybody knows, it's a hard way to go for black women. And I do not feel discriminated with on this council. But I am supporting the temporary budget. I want the staff to know you are supported. I want you to know, go back into looking at those videos. I keep telling you all the time, learn for yourself. You ain't got to sit here and listen to what we're saying. Go back. Those videos will tell you how I've been trying to support you. The Archer, the Archer report is because I kept bringing up your salaries, and we still have not gotten that yet. That's why the Archer report was done, because I kept bringing up your salaries. So please, don't listen to Patrick and the hate that he spilled in here about we not supporting you as employees and us not supporting this city. Because we care very much about you all. Because as Tony says all the time, my check is lower than his, $250 every two weeks. And I tell you, check anybody else's attendance and meetings that we have against someone else. We meet more than anybody else. And anytime we try to get a break, administration try to put a meeting there. Anytime we have a break for the summer, the administration try to put a meeting there. We work here just like we are full-time employees. So it's not that we don't care. We give a lot of our time. A lot of our time away from our family. So please, employees, take what you hear with a grain of salt, because that is not true. Thank you.
Point of inquiry, Mr. President.
Yes.
So as the introducing sponsor of this legislation, I'm wondering if you can look at the legislation and let me know what three months of expenses for city council is.
Yeah. So, Mr. Petras?
As I explained in my email, as we discussed at the table yesterday, we were comfortable with using the numbers from the drafted 2025 budget for council because we were aware of all of those numbers. And so as I explained in the email, I took those numbers from the drafted 2025 budget and included those.
Right. So I guess my second follow-up question then, and I don't know, you're the introducing sponsor. I don't know, so he crafted it, and so he can explain it, I suppose. But I guess two follow-up questions are, you were comfortable fully funding a year of council operations, but you did not feel comfortable, for instance, with the salaries and benefits of our Public Works employees or that were provided by the director of Public Works? Or the salaries and benefits of our Parks and Recreation employees that was provided by the director of Public Works? You were not, you were not satisfied with the veracity of the personnel estimates for our police or our fire for a year when Chief Britton and Chief Harry presented to you what the expected salaries and benefits for 2025 would be for people who run into burning buildings in our city? You were not satisfied with the credibility of those salaries for a full year, but you were very, very satisfied with your own? Could you please explain to me the discrepancy and why you don't trust Christopher Britton's estimate of the salaries and benefits for the people who work in the police department or-
Oh, Mr. Mayor, here's what I'd like to do.
Of the people who work in the fire department.
Here's what I'd like to do. I have my remarks, and I'll, you know, kind of go through those in my remarks. But thank you for that. You know what?
Another point of inquiry too, because Ms. Russell mentioned something interesting.
Well, I mean, finish your point of inquiry. I don't know.
I don't know that I've gotten an answer as to the discrepancy in credibility between Chief Britton's estimate of his people's salaries and benefits and yours.
I'm going to, I'm going to read my remarks and my answers.
Provide a sufficient answer?
It's in my remarks, but did you have, if you had another point of inquiry, I mean, I want to recognize that. It is a legitimate parliamentary inquiry.
You know what? I'll hold off.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Just for clarification, in your remarks, you're going to explain why the only salaries have been fully funded for the entire year are ours, correct?
The way I, yeah, I'm going to say it exactly the way I'd like to say it. But you know what? I'll tell you, I want to say something. What is, what I think is very interesting, I'm just kind of sitting here, just taking all of it in. That's what happens when you're council president, everybody speaks first. We have eight elected officials here, and we're all really different. I mean, I'm listening to everybody express themselves in really their own unique way. And this is the wonderful thing about government. And anybody who's sitting here or watching this, thinking, oh, these people are in lockstep with each other, I mean, that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is a lot of, I think, you know, well-reasoned out positions on these issues. And I just want you to know that I do appreciate that.
Actually, Mr. President, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I know you wanted to make your statement last.
Yes.
Well, then, out of sensitivity to that, maybe I should ask my question now so as not to step on your final comments.
You know, I'd really like to get-
The question has to do with what multiple council members have said thus far. And it is that everybody should be comfortable. Nobody should be concerned. Your salaries, your benefits won't be hurt. The money's there. The money's there. The money's there.
Is this, is there a point of inquiry? Because that's-
The point of inquiry is, if the money is there, and you are so confident that the money is there for people's salaries and benefits, why not fund a full year of just salaries and benefits for the comfort of the employees, not even the other than personal services? Do three months for that maybe, although I still think that's a stupid idea. If you want to focus on capital next year, fine. But the salaries and benefits for the people who perform these services for us, provide them that level of comfort. There is very little wiggle room on this.
So in a sense, I have an answer again in my prepared remarks. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let me take a drink first. It's not that long, but I still want to. All right. So this temporary budget is really the best thing this council can do under these very difficult circumstances. Regardless of all the hyperbole and the catastrophizing, everything's going to be just fine. We just have to do things a little bit different this year because council received last-minute budget information from an understaffed but hard-working finance department. We looked at it, asked a lot of questions, got some answers. But at the end of the day, there were some things we just could not- But at the end of the day, there were some things we just could not ignore. The budget was prepared, again, by an understaffed finance department that had no director for the past year, an interim director that quit during the budget hearings, and a city administrator who had responsibilities for the budget who gave his notice at the end of last summer. To say the least, there was a night and day difference between doing the budget last year and doing it this year. The mayor's proposed budget is almost $1 million in the red, and it still lacks allocations for capital projects, a service workers' contract, and a salary study that will undoubtedly call for higher salaries for many employees. The budget hearings and the quality and timeliness of the budget materials council received, as well as the lack of an experienced professional finance director, all paled in comparison to that budget process I was talking about a year ago. The steps this council majority has taken to create a temporary budget will allow the administration to work together with council early next year to create a budget that has a better foundation based on a lot more information, such as an accurate picture of the city's unencumbered balance for 2024. We'll have the state's 2023 financial audit. The results of an outside CPA firm reviewing our 2024 budget. A capital budget that's based on real numbers, not projections. And answers for more of councils unanswered questions, and there still are many. And we can do all of this without any impediments or interruptions to our staff or our city services. This council and this mayor have worked together on 275 pieces of legislation this year. With the exception of two pieces of legislation, we were mostly on the same page and in agreement. And I think this idea that there's some war going on is just not borne out by reality. Obviously, I'm sorry. Obviously, this one, you know, this piece of legislation is a bit contentious. But that's all part of government. Checks on my oral power are not easy, but sometimes they're necessary. And we've done them before. The TWG project, thank God, we did not do the first version of that project. It had a lousy process and a lousy product. It was rejected by the ABR, by the Planning Commission. And if we had not stepped in, and this is the same situation, not good process, not good product. But, you know, okay, it's been contentious. That happens. I don't like all this hyperbole. I don't like the catastrophizing, the drama, but, you know, what are you gonna do? Our city appears to have an adequate reserve base in our unencumbered balance. But we cannot, it's, the thing about a budget, it's very different than your finances. The budget puts the city on a trajectory. And that's what budgets do. And that is based off of too many unknowns right now. And I just listed them. So today, council needs to take a cautious path, pass this temporary budget. And I hope we can just lower the temperature a bit. You know, very early on, three years ago, I saw a council sitting here and a mayor sitting there, same, some of the same people, most of the same people, but the mayor, obviously, the council. And I just saw a lot of people ready to roll up their sleeves and get to work, and they were smiling and everything. And almost within a month, I saw collaboration and enthusiasm be replaced by confrontation and nastiness. And I was surprised. I was really surprised. And very disappointed. And the phone calls I would get, I mean, people were heartbroken on this council. One of them left just for that reason. Like, I can't take this. I don't think this has to be. I read the email that was sent out yesterday, and I was like, oh, my God. This is, we live in two different worlds, Mr. Mayor, sometimes. Not all the time. But this whole situation and the way it's portrayed, I mean, I'm listening to the people come up. 95% of the people, we had, I had 47 emails on this topic. Two and a half of them were with you. And 45 and a half of them were like, you guys are doing the right thing. I'm listening to the people talk today, and then I listen to the employees talk. And it's just like, it's mind-boggling. It really is. I can't imagine why our track record, which is rock-solid with the employees here, and I'm looking at you, Chief, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I can't imagine you're not looking at us right now. This is probably a little bit of a leap. And just saying, you know, I have gotten nothing but what I've asked for from this city council, and nothing but a good vibe about how we care about you and your department. I would say that, of course, to all the departments, but you guys just happen, you and Sean, just happen to be sitting here right now. I'm going to support this legislation. I really feel like as soon as, you know, the temperature comes down, we just enjoy the holidays and come back in January. And this is our reality, that we'll sit down and work everything else out. And with that, Eddie, call the roll.
Cobb.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
No.
Cuda.
Yes.
Petrus.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Posh.
Yes.
All right, Eddie, third readings.
I have ordinance number 244-2024 on third reading, amended 121724, and ordinance enacting section 1351.35 of the codified ordinances of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, entitled "Tenants' Rights and Responsibilities Introduced by Councilmember Petrus."
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to request that we delay voting on this. I received an email from, with some suggestions for it because I was busy working on the temporary budget. I did not have a chance to review and consider those suggestions. And so in order to give consideration to those, I'd like to delay this vote until the January 6 meeting, if that's okay.
So just to be clear, you're not withdrawing it?
Correct.
If we could. Do a fourth reading?
Correct, yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to committee reports. Anybody have a committee report? Okay. Old business.
Mr. President?
Old business, yes, sir.
This council has discussed on multiple occasions the fact that the investigation regarding this council was a waste of time. And in fact, they stated that there wasn't anything illegal that happened in terms of private meetings. And however, there was a training issue. My issue and my concern is, this council has stated this. However, it has done absolutely nothing to correct that problem. This was indeed a training issue. Exactly what steps is this council taking in terms of risk management to ensure that whatever happened in your meetings does not continue to happen again? If we're going to talk about transparency and trust, our residents still have no clue exactly why those meetings happened, and they were absolutely in clear violation of a committee I'm on. And so we have pushed past the mayor's legislation on the emails and on anything that would give us some kind of ground rules. So my question is, when are we going to revisit this conversation about the training of this council, if that's truly what it is, on how to make sure that we are operating transparently? We told the city that we had training issues, and nothing has been done. So at this point, I would like to know exactly what steps are going to be taken to make sure that this council behaves ethically. Because right now, I'm right in the place that I was before with no answers for even why my housing committee met with behind my back with the council president. So is there going to be any training? Is there going to be a conversation? Or are we just going to push past this? This is something we've discussed over a matter of months. And we have time to have transparency for the administration, but there's been no accountability for ourselves. So if this is indeed a training issue, then I expect some type of process to happen to correct it. If not, then we need to talk about what are the next steps. Because I'm not ignoring this. And if we don't do something about this, then we need to bring this back up in the public and have a council meeting about these emails that I received and your agendas, if we don't want to go that route. But we need to address this. The community expects it, and we cannot continue to move forward in 2025 without some type of risk management and guardrails around this council if it is indeed a training issue like this council stated.
I can answer that question. We've had two meetings, and those issues have come up. And I don't want to preempt the conclusion because we still, we've been waiting, actually, we've been waiting for some things that we discussed in those two meetings that we had.
Council meetings, just for clarification, you're saying meetings? You're talking about council meetings?
No, 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 I'm sorry. We had meetings with the lawyers that are involved and council leadership. And we're still waiting for information from the lawyers right now. So when those meetings are wrapped up, I think you're going to get the answer you're looking for on the training piece and on the email piece.
Yeah, risk operations.
Yes, yes, we did.
So should I assume that whatever was happening before is continuing to happen now?
No, you should assume that those issues were brought up and are being addressed. But not until we're done with those meetings can we actually, let's see, act on it.
So this council will not discuss any of that until leadership has finished meeting?
Correct. It would be, it's just not something we should do at this point because we have not come to an actual conclusion yet with our work.
So again.
You could ask.
Nothing has changed. I'm assuming the processes that were in place before, and those meetings are continuing to happen then. Because I have no answers, and neither does the public. So where do we stand with that? Right now, I'm still walking in here, and I don't know who you're meeting with, who's meeting with who, and what agendas are being happening. And I got a housing meeting coming up again. So I need some clarification on that. We're going to talk about this and put it out here. Let's not put it all on administration. Let's have our conversation.
I'm not, no, 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 no.
Because I haven't met with, I haven't met with an attorney. I don't have that attorney. It's representing whoever, I don't even know what, haven't seen a contract. So that doesn't help me. Your private conversations aren't helping me at all. So I want to know, are these conversations continuing to happen? And what are we doing about it? Because we have legislation that we put back up for January to discuss for emails. Are we pushing that back off? I would like to know where we are.
That's where we are. We're two meetings in, and we're waiting for more. We're waiting for some actions that were agreed upon in those meetings so we could have, actually, so we could wrap this up.
I would like to have then an executive session with that attorney then. I have no conversation with that attorney. I have no idea what conversations are happening, if they're operating on behalf of this council.
That's something that the law director could, is that something?
I'm asking the council if they're interested in having that conversation.
I want to ask our law director if that's something that can be called for, an update, so to speak, in executive session on this topic.
Council has the ability to have an executive session discussion about, with an attorney for the public body with, about pending or imminent litigation. So I'm not going to respond tonight about whether, there is no pending litigation. So the question becomes, is there imminent litigation? And I'm not in a position to speak to that tonight.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other old business? Any other old business? Okay, new business. Okay, sorry. Council member comments.
Mr. President?
President Russell.
No, I just want to thank the city employees for coming in tonight. And I want to express again to the fact that, for anyone wondering, they have minds of their own. They came in, no one was threatened, no one was harmed, no one was told they had to. They weren't drug in here. And I just want to make sure that the public recognizes it's insulting to think otherwise. They came in because they had concerns on their own. Lastly, I think this is a great night because a lot has been exposed about feelings on both sides. It's clear that there are, there's a lot of tension in this community. I've received tons of emails, tons of phone calls about these conversations and other things. If we're wondering where this council went wrong, I can tell you from my point of view, it's because from the time many of us were elected, we weren't given the opportunity to even get a chance for folks to get to know who we were. To give you an example about what the mayor and I have experienced in this case, you had Councilman Cobb in the middle of the city administrators' interview. So how does he feel about working for a young and inexperienced mayor? He's 40-something years old with a wife and children and a full career and experience. That's how we are looked at by many of the older members in this community. And it has caused quite a bit of division. And so I would like for this community to know that we are just as competent as the rest of the members of this council, even those who at some cases are 20 years older than me. And it is insulting for you to speak to the mayor and I as if we're children, when you can speak to the rest of this council as if they're adults. And so I would appreciate that same level of respect and cooperation. This council does not have respect for everybody on this council. We are not all treated the same. And I am absolutely treated as an other. And when I say things, I'm constantly repeating myself because this council doesn't listen from the time I'm opening my mouth. And the only time they do is when I'm loud, which means some people in the public are saying, well, why is he doing that? But you have no idea what it's like to be in a place like this, speaking for people, and no one else is even willing to hear you in some cases. Right now, as I'm speaking, the disrespect and the intimidation from people in the audience right now, it is constant from the time that I start to open my mouth before I say a word. So I want the community to know, we may all be a very liberal community in Cleveland Heights, but there is an extremely lack, difficult, and horrible lack of respect for people who do not look like you or think like you in some cases, and we're using as a fallback that we're just concerned for this city. I think if I was in my 60s and the mayor was, and if we were white for cert, sure, we would not get half the questions that we do. But because people are leery of that, because they never experienced it before, it has caused a level of uncomfort. I get that. I'm an executive-level leader, and there are people who are over 20 years my senior who have to call me their boss. I experience this all the time. But we've got to get to the point where we're not trying to constantly prove ourselves and convince you that we're not doing anything wrong. There's got to be a level of trust on both sides. But when I come here, it's a constant state of defense. Because you ask my colleagues, could you please work and collaborate? But you ask me, would you please stop acting like a child? When you talk to an African-American that way, it infantizes us in a way that you have no idea how disrespectful that is. And only many of us who've worked in corporate America can tell you how it feels to be in a room and be minimized, no matter what experience and what resume you bring to the table. But that's what's been happening. I am a competent black man who only happens to be 42 years old. Your mayor is only a year older than me. But both of us have multiple years of government and financial experience and executive leadership roles. I need that to be respected like you do the rest of my colleagues. That's where we start. If we can't start from that point, I don't know how we can continue to collaborate. But there are people who elected me for exactly those reasons because they saw the makeup of this council, and they knew it would be a problem if I wasn't here. So for every person who is upset that I might be in this seat or that I speak the way that I do, I want you to know there are five other people who are excited about the fact that somebody who represents them, speaks on their behalf, and looks like them is in this seat. So when you say you can't wait for me to leave, look at the makeup of this council and ask yourself what it looks like if I'm not here. And ask yourself if maybe you have a blind spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Councilman Cobb? I think I heard your hand hit your forehead.
I'm here all night. And I, for anyone still watching at home or that's here, I appreciate your patience. I don't want to get into a lengthy debate or back and forth with what the mayor said. Anyone that wants to reach out to me to have a private conversation about everything that's transpired tonight, please call me. I'm glad to do that. In the interview the other day, I did not refer to the mayor as inexperienced. I asked what the dynamics or the challenges might be or how he would handle working with someone that was less experienced, which was a true statement. He was the mayor of Akron for eight years. And anyone in the employment world knows that there is a dynamic involved when you are an older person reporting to someone that is younger and less experienced than you are. Also, in respect to the employees that were, came in here earlier, if you don't enjoy civil service protection and you work at the pleasure of the mayor, and you're asked to show your support coming?